I would like to call the November 5, 2012, school committee meeting to order. The agenda tonight is visitors, approval of minutes, teaching and learning highlights, K-8 technology skills curriculum, Ms. Green, Norfolk County District Attorney's Security Grant, Mrs. Myers-Packler, final NEASK report with Mrs. Spinelli and Mrs. Packler, MCAS analysis part two, Mrs. Spinelli and Dr. Berdus, baseline and benchmarks update, Mrs. Spinelli, Dr. Berdus. School committee vote to reappoint Mrs. Spinelli as a voting member of the five county collaborative board of directors for 2012 school year. Turf SAW field project update, Mrs. Spinelli, Mr. Youkno, other matters, adjourned. Any additions, projections?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of October 15.
I'll second, but I did want to have one comment on the discussion. Just under the section of MCAS overview, about midway through, Wendy, it says discussion followed, and then it references in that same paragraph below some more discussion that occurred, and I think it might just be good for the purpose of the record and clarity just to say discussion followed regarding appropriate comparisons, something to that effect. Does that make sense to folks?
Yeah.
And I think that also makes clear a little further down some of the comments that are written. So if I could just suggest we approve as amended.
Okay. All in favor as amended?
Absolutely.
Okay. We go on to teaching and learning highlights, K-8 technology skills curriculum.
Yes, I'm happy to have you here. It was Carrie Green up to the visitors' chair. As you know, Carrie is our K-8, K-12, sorry, K-12 technology integration specialist, the one and only that serves our five schools and not only helps teachers integrate technology into their curriculum, but does a lot of research for us, a lot of support, a lot of the things that occur in the classroom that are technology related. Carrie is the point person for those things. So as such, she's the point person for our K-8 technology skills curriculum, which we started developing and did develop a few years ago, and we've been working on it the last couple of years to implement it, and now there's an even better plan for integrating it into the regular core curriculum subjects. So Carrie's going to explain to you a little bit about that and a little bit about what she does as well as part of that. So Carrie, thank you for coming.
Thank you, Debbie. So the technology literacy curriculum came from the Massachusetts Technology Literacy Standards and Expectations, and we developed it. We had to Fox-Burize it. So we took the standards, they're in grade spans, K through 2, 3 to 5, and 6 to 8, and we took them and we kind of separated out the standards and said which ones teachers should be maybe introducing and or practicing with their students or maybe have mastery of it. So sometimes you'll see the standards, there's sometimes, you know, the kids will have mastery of it first time the teacher's introducing it if it's a real simple standard. I did bring a copy of, I just grabbed Grade 1, and it's not as pretty in paper form, it's actually a lot better in digital form. It's an interactive curriculum document where you can click on it and it'll open up a folder that's on the district share for our teachers, and it has examples of lessons that they can do in the classroom, whole class with their interactive whiteboards or in the computer lab, and it has all sorts of resources for the students. So I can, if you want to see it. And I can share with you some of the standards that we have. There are three main standards, and standard one is demonstrate proficiency in the use of computers and applications as well as an understanding of the concepts underlying hardware, software, and connectivity. There are six individual little components of this, and it's going to look different in each grade level. So basic operations, kind of what is a desktop, start menu, word processing and desktop publishing. You're really not going to see that in the kindergarten level. You're going to wait until the upper levels to see that, database. Kids, they may know what that is in the 3 to 5 grade span, but they're not going to really get a handle on that concept until the older grade spans. And next one is spreadsheets. And we are all probably familiar with Excel, and in our elementary schools that looks like graph club, and it's a kid-friendly graphing program where they can graph like the number of letters in their names, and that's actually an extension of their Think Math program. And internet networking and online communication, kind of how to navigate the web, what is a website, items like that. Multimedia and presentation tools, that goes from starting out with PowerPoint in grade 3, they create a PowerPoint biography, and going up through, once they hit middle school, they do, they start using a lot of Web 2.0 tools.
Like Prezi, for example?
Like a Prezi. The standard 2, this is demonstrate the responsible use of technology and an understanding of ethics and safety issues in using electronic media at home, in schools, and in society. This fits in perfectly with the Karen School Communities Program and just kind of how you should be using technology. And there's only three sections to it, ethics, society, and health and safety, and this also kind of fits into being a good digital citizen and the digital citizenship kind of curriculum that just flows throughout the whole curriculum in general. Standard 3 is, this is more kind of the 21st century skills, demonstrate the ability to use technology for research, critical thinking, problem solving, decision making, communication, collaboration, creativity, and innovation, research, problem solving, and communication. At the younger levels, it's really just, I mean, just using the simple KidPicks drawing program and creating the life cycle of a frog, just using stamps and just a real simple program like that. And then with the upper levels, you might use blogging with your kids using KidBlog. And that's a summary of our technology literacy curriculum, and just kind of what we're trying to do. I'm working with the teachers and developing these lessons and supporting them when I'm in their buildings. I think that's it.
And you cover all buildings?
I try to, yes.
How often do you get to each building?
I have a set schedule where at the Ahearn, I'm there a day and a half a week, the high school gets a day and a half, and each elementary school gets a half a day, and then that leaves me a half a day to do some district-wide work.
It's a tight schedule.
It is.
That's why I think you remember, the other thing on our wish list that we didn't ask for last year was additional, something additional in the tech department, but I think you can see why. But one of the reasons I asked Carrie to be tonight's teaching and learning highlight is to show that when we have to do something new, so a few years ago, we had no technology skills curriculum. In fact, I think the previously written one couldn't be located in the district, and we were a few months into developing one, and somebody finally found one in a file cabinet somewhere, I don't remember which school, but it was so old that most of the technology in it, it was like, it was like taking a document out of a museum. So it was quite amusing, but it wasn't something that we could go back to and just tweak because it referenced technologies that you don't even see anymore, they were so basic. So that's how long there had been, I'll just say, in attention to the technology skills curriculum. So when we developed it a few years ago, then the question becomes, then what? We don't have computer teachers at the elementary school levels where kids go to classes with a computer teacher, so who's going to be, you know, who's going to be teaching students to acquire these skills and then go apply them so that they can use them independently? So we do have, we do have a computer teacher at the middle school, a lot of you know Julie Grant teaches the 5th and 6th grade, for example, and 7th and 8th, we don't have a dedicated teacher to computers, there's somebody in the applied tech lab, but that is not for this purpose, it's for specific projects that require applied technology, and there's units of study in there. So, and at the high school, obviously, they don't go to a class unless they're taking something like that as elective. So except for 5th and 6th grade, we were left with this dilemma that, so now we have, it's called the NET standards, the National Educational Technology Standards. We modeled ours after them, spent significant time, and then had, I guess, kind of a then what reaction, and we spent a year having teachers just look at it and comment on it and where their integration could possibly occur. But instead of saying now we have another new thing and there's another class and you have to take time periods out, it's just, technology is a tool to be used to learn about everything else, just like reading and writing are tools to be used to learn about the rest of the world and every other subject you learn. So with the help of Carrie and the teachers, and Amy as well, who's now overseeing the curriculum, that they've come up with this plan to have skills, integrate, to have the kids integrate these skills and content learning into all their other subjects in practical ways so that it makes sense and we can kind of knit some things together. So it is something that was, called it new slash old, in that we had one years ago, but we also years ago had a dedicated person that taught these lessons in the elementary library media centers. That position no longer exists, that was a while ago. So I give them a lot of credit because to really work with teachers in an ongoing fashion and for a couple of years to figure out how this can be done really is quality work because then you can really ensure it'll continue to be done and not something that when the next three things come, it gets dropped off because we don't have time for computer time again or technology class time. So it's still a lot of work, but I give you a lot of credit, and you can see, I think the other thing is that people watching at home don't really realize how complex teaching and learning has become. So this is an example of the complexity of it, that you're your subject area expert, for example, at the high school, we expect you to incorporate all these other things and teach kids these sort of skills and have them practice and apply them at the same time they're learning the content. So there's a lot to juggle, and I think our teachers do a pretty good job of juggling it, and there's always more work to do. So, loved your video.
Thanks.
Yes.
Carrie, I want to thank you for coming because literacy is such a hot topic, technology literacy, you know, and skills in the 21st century. I know it's a lot of interest, not just to us in the committee, but to a lot of our parents, so thank you for what you do, and thank you for coming and presenting this. I had a couple of maybe lower-level detailed questions, Amy, that maybe I could just point to you, that just popped into my mind watching this, you know, this is so computer-based and it's appropriate and it's pervasive across all different areas, I think we should teach our kids, but so much is going towards mobile devices now and phones, and have we given any thought yet to maybe doing education on proper use of mobile technology?
Absolutely, we have. One of the things that, with part of the curriculum, the digital citizenship standards that are in there, we see that it's not just our students in schools, it's really families and helping to bring them to an awareness of what it means to be a good digital citizen at the same time of safety when we're talking about all of the cyber things that you typically think of. We're going to actually focus, if you remember last year for National Digital Learning Day, which was the first one, it was February 1st, we're going to have another evening for parents this year, and we've decided to hold it again on National Digital Learning Day, which is February 6th, I believe, and we're going to focus on that, not just from a, from a safety standpoint, absolutely from that piece, but also from what does it mean to be a good digital citizen and what is digital literacy? So we're bringing it to students and parents can understand what we're bringing to students in the curriculum, but at the same time, give our parents some information that they may not realize because the mobile devices are everywhere. And we've talked a lot about, if your child has one, parents may have a charging station and they bring it downstairs at night, some, something as simple as that, they still may not be thinking of that iPod or any of those other smaller mobile devices as a computer in their hands. They think, well, it's a laptop, I make them keep it downstairs, or it's an iPad. But if they have an iTouch, they have the world at their fingertips. And so really helping arm our parents with good questions to be asking, things to be watching for, things to be looking for, and to have that ongoing conversation, and also those check-ins and look to see what's taking place.
I think one of the things I've certainly learned as a middle school parent now is it seems to me this is the onset of the cell phone, and the texting from the school bus, and I think the more we can expand our curriculum for Carrie, but start to think about how we educate the kids on proper use of those devices, that'd be helpful. That was just one question. The other one was kind of a philosophical question, but with all of the search tools that are available to our students, and Carrie talked about using the computer as a resource for collaboration and research and that type of thing, what is the policy on using search tools like Google to answer homework questions? Have we thought about that?
I don't know from a policy standpoint.
I don't think we have a policy on it. I invite the principals if you have any, if anything goes on within the buildings.
And I'm just bringing the questions on you guys, so I don't mean to...
You mean using Google in terms of, you know, hate to say when I was a kid because I used to hate, you know, we had like the set of encyclopedias and those don't exist anymore. So kids have to learn how to search intelligently and with a filter. So not every, that is actually a key part of the technology skills curriculum, is how you are able to critically evaluate the authenticity and the accuracy of online information. That is actually a standard in there, and there are specific lessons that incorporate that. And I know the high school then follows it up, this is a K-8 curriculum where they're taught these things, but they're expected to continue to apply. So we do teach all of those things. I don't think there's a policy for which sites to use because, if or not to use, because the minute we have one, there'll be another site. So, but I do think that the challenge for us, I think both your questions are good because our challenge is, we do include in the curriculum how, how to be a good digital citizen in using these tools, especially the mobile ones, and how to critically evaluate online information. But the majority of time that kids are applying that, and we would see if they're actually doing it properly when they're out of school. So that is, I think, a challenge, is that we'll go ahead and teach it, and we have been, but we, we don't typically have time during the school day or they have the devices on the school day where we're able to evaluate them when they're applying it. So that's why we need, you know, family engagement and more communication with families.
But looking at sites, as far as the ones that are, the good ones, as far as really accurate information, it is, it is part of the curriculum. Another piece too, like TurnItIn.com is a software program that we have at the high school, colleges, universities use it, and it's a tool to be able to put in information if a student wrote an essay to look, to see for plagiarism. And that is a tool that we use in schools. But one of the great things that teachers do with that, it's not a gotcha as far as from a plagiarism standpoint, it's a teaching tool. And they actually teach the students to begin with to plagiarize so they can see how it comes up in this program, and it's a back and forth in modeling. So when students do go off into the, you know, the collegiate world or wherever they go, they know about these tools that exist, but they also understand proper citations and as far as the research that's involved, they're really armed with those skills when they leave here. The only other thing that I wanted to point out, and it was very quick in her great video there, if you watch closely, you saw a lot of different things as far as not just the computer labs, you saw the response systems in the children's hands, some of the science probes, the children going up to the board because that interactive whiteboard is for interactivity, for the children to be going up to the board and having that back and forth. And I think that that's a really, you know, important point that you could see during those, is that you did have the interactivity taking place, and there are many different modes of technology that were being used there.
The first graders were thinking the remotes were cell phones at first, it was so cute. They thought the remote response systems were cell phones at first, and they were so excited to just hold them and just, it took them a moment with the technology.
I bet the dialing out didn't quite go that well, though.
It didn't, it didn't, we didn't have good reception.
It's really cute. It does show, though, our definition of technology tools are so broad, that the definition's so broad, includes so many things.
I think we as a system have come a long way, having watched how technology has been introduced within the school system, and I think, I think one of the biggest obstacles we had at first was that the teachers weren't that acclimated to try to incorporate it, and they didn't have the support system that they needed. So I'm sure it's like any, it's like me trying to learn something new sometimes, you tend to keep pushing it aside and pushing it aside, and before you know it, you're overwhelmed instead of doing a little bit at a time. So I think probably one of the biggest assets we have is we have someone like you that can go in and answer their questions and help them and keep them going. And as far as technology and your kids, a word of grandmotherly advice, if you hear them laughing behind a closed door and they're working on the computer, go in and see what they're doing. You might be surprised. We have, we have a setup at home for grandchildren where we have two computers, two Dell setups with the keyboards and everything else, probably the, and one is for the boys and one is for the girls with all the appropriate apps on, and I'm amazed when I see the four-year-old turn it on in the proper sequence and get into the app they want and use their code, and I'm just blown away by it. But probably the biggest mistake that we made was putting the copying machine between the two because 35 Bobby things, the same, but for a lot of paper and a lot of colors. So that you do have to be careful of. But, I mean, technology is their way of life, and if we don't interact with them early, you know, I watch my grandson with the iPad, and it's, it's like, Grandma, no, this is mine, and I see him take a little pot and put them back together and do sentences and draw down the words, and it's, it's absolutely amazing. So, you know, in the right hands with the right people and the right instruction, it's amazing what these kids can do, so you just have to keep feeding into it.
And you might hear a little more about the mobile environment when we do, we have a NEASK report, is that what it was in? So, you know, I, I think that we have had kind of a more thoughtful planned approach to it, but at some point we have to step on the gas a little bit more or we won't be in the same race.
Well, the kids will be in the same race.
The kids will be, but as a school system, we might not be, so. But I think it's, you know, with Carrie's support, it's gone pretty well with teachers being able to learn these and apply them to the areas, but it is hard.
With her extra help session over here.
Oh, it was. Right.
We have two bonus tools.
Yeah. We're lucky because we like onsite courses, and if we have our own people teaching them and it's graduate credits through Johnson and Wills, even better. So, thanks, Carrie.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Norfolk County District Attorney's Security Grant, Mrs. Myers.
Yes. As she's getting set up, I, you know, each, each year, the Norfolk County District Attorney's Office offers this school security grant to see if schools want to take advantage and apply for that. And some years you're ready to take advantage and apply for it, and some years you're not, some things, some years you have a use and some you don't. So one of the things, among many, that I'm grateful for, Mrs. Myers-Packler, is that she is a great writer, so we don't have to rely on one or two people in the district that write grants. So if you have somebody that's going to write something that's school-specific, she did all the research, connected with the police department, looked into the security needs and working with them collaboratively with Bill, came up with a plan, and applied for the grant, was successful. So I'm going to let you talk about it.
Well, just a little background, Norfolk County does have this money, as Mrs. Spinelli said, that is available for school security, and we were planning on attending the summit that they had for all of the schools in Norfolk County, and I was on the phone with the secretary, and she did say, you know, we haven't gotten your grant, and I said, what grant? What do you mean? There's money out there. And so she said yes, and so in collaboration with Mr. Youkno, with the police chief, we did take a look and said, well, what can we do? And one of the things that we do know is that our front door camera and monitor and recording devices are quite antiquated, and there's still a VCR kind of put in, pull out, still on a videotape and all of that. So the chief's suggestion was, if anything, let's try to update that. As a matter of fact, we were just meeting this morning, Mr. Youkno and myself and our head of grounds and maintenance, and it was really a matter of what else can we do? We might be looking at a very small picture right now, but how can we be looking at this in a much broader scope? And how can we start something new, but at the same time make it so that we can continue to add on? So that was part of our discussion today, and so that's what we're moving forward with. So we did receive in, it was a $2,000 grant, we'll be matching that piece of it within district, and so we'll be moving forward with that really as quickly as we can, and at this point I can hand it over to our business manager on that end of it.
Yeah. What the discussion was today was, again, a lot of the technology around security nowadays is networked security, it's not the old coax cable type stuff. So, you know, Tony and I and Diane, basically, we're looking at the ability to start wiring the building, maybe on a smaller step today where our front door, our back door, and maybe like the gymnasium area had secured cameras, but by doing it under a network solution, A, we don't have the old technology as far as how we store the data, we do need to obviously maintain this stuff for a couple of weeks at a time, just in case someone wants us to backtrack, but also we want the ability from pretty much anywhere to be able to look at those cameras. And if we do it on a network environment, obviously I can do it from my office, Deb can do it from hers, you know, Diana can do it from her office. So it's not going to be locked to wherever this one little terminal is, which is what the, the current standard, you know, has been. So that's the way we want to go with it. Our thing is, we have $4,000, we'll take that as far as we can, we'll use our own people to do the wiring if that helps us to spread it further, and we'll just start to get this thing going, but basically giving us ability that if we decide, you know, we need new cameras in other areas, that we'll be able to add those down the road with virtually the same technology.
I think one of the things, I want to thank you again for doing that, because one of the things that really hit me is, everybody knows there's a camera there, but I don't think up until now we were really that clear in how little they can see of the person. So it really is true, I was very concerned about safety because it is true what she says, that you can't, you have to rely on voice to decide if you're going to let somebody in. And I can vouch for that because I've been back five years, and when I buzz middle school if my keys aren't out fast enough, because they have a little scan system to get in, like they'll say, hi Debbie, I can't see it, and if I come to the high school, I buzz, it's like, who is it? It's Debbie. So unless you say your name, and if it's a name they don't know, what are you visiting for? So you can't, you really, we should not in this day and age be relying strictly on voice to decide whether to let somebody in the school. They can't see the video, so that, not, not well enough to even identify the person. So, very much needed. Very much needed.
Bill, what's your sense on timeline?
We're actually already investigating the different units to see which one we want to go with, but my assumption is if we can make a selection next week or so, we could probably have this done during one of the, you know, upcoming holidays, because we do have to string, you know, cabling throughout the hallways, but, or we could do it at night. So we have some options. I think we can do it relatively quickly, is I guess my point, so.
I think just, you know, reading about this, and then, you know, other people reading about, I'm just, I'm really happy to hear we're going to be moving on it really, really quickly. It was really surprising to me, and I assumed, I assumed we got the grant, but as I was reading and reading, I was waiting for that punchline at the end. It's like, phew.
Okay, good. And we actually, we went to the summit a couple of weeks ago, the police chief, a bunch of us went, and that's when they announced the grant. So we did know a few weeks ago that we were the happy recipient. And it's not a large sum of money, but I think seeing this and as we discuss it, it really speaks to the fact that, I mean, we're doing great. So much support from the community, from you, from staff members who, you know, really make it wonderful to work here. But there are so many of these small things that need attention, there are a lot of things that need attention. So just because everything is wonderful doesn't mean the community should think everything's pretty much taken care of. There are a lot of these types of things that really need us to pay attention to when we are.
we are, you know, tackling them one thing at a time. So, thank you.
I just have a question. Bill, once you're looking into this and crossing stuff, if there's some key areas that you think we need to have some eyes on, could you come back to the committee if you need some more money? Because, you know, certainly I would be adverse to us using something on one of the revolving accounts that has to do with the buildings. Because if it's, you know, if we could, I'd rather do it right than do it half and have to come back with it.
We've had lots of conversations with the police department over the last several years, actually. And I would say many, if not most, high schools do have an internal camera system that is also connected to the police department. So if an event were to occur, an emergency happened in the schools, they can actually see inside the school to see what's going on and where there's movement or where there's a problem. Most high schools have gone toward that type of technology. So I think, I think Chief O'Leary and I have talked about that each year, the last couple of years. And I think we do have a mutual interest in at least having a discussion about whether we think we need it or don't need it. And I don't, I haven't, I don't personally know whether, you know, our community will think we do need it or don't need it, but I think sometime over the course of this year, it would be good to have that discussion.
Well, you don't ever want to look back and say we should have had it either.
Right.
Because that's, that's not good.
Well, I did, I did work in a community where the cameras were installed after an event that was after a crime was created. So that's always been in the back of my mind. So I know the police chief would like to engage in that conversation. So if the committee would like that, we could at least start the conversation.
I think we should. Martha, I think you bring up a good point. I mean, this is safety and if we, if.
It's safety and it's, you know, why start laying wires to find out we should have laid something different?
Exactly.
Or we should have attacked a different area or included a different area.
Yeah.
You know, take a look at the whole thing, see where the hotspots are, where we need to address, and come back to us and.
Well, this is the start of that. Whatever we do now, this is the beginning of that system and this won't.
But I just, as, as one committee member, I would be in support of us doing it right the first time.
Well, and in talking to Tony already on this, when we sat this morning, the thought was if we're going down a hallway and we feel that we were going off in different branches, we will be, we'll run a bunch of wires at the same time. So even if we can't afford all the cameras, we'll, you know, if we have a ceiling open, we're going to go down with, you know, six runs rather than one run. Because the cable's relatively inexpensive. I mean, it's not cheap, but it's, it's not, you know, that bad of a cost investment. And that's exactly why we want to go the network version of this versus, because if I can get it, or my computer, obviously Ed O'Leary can get it on his desk, so.
And I, I think there's, I don't know, I think in some regards, you know, tell us as a community where we're going to protect this building, but I think for us to lay out the details per se, I don't want to give people a heads up as to far as somebody comes in.
I think we have to have a philosophical discussion about whether you, representing the community, feels that we want to expand, you know, the video capacity inside a school for safety and security reasons. And I think after that, it's up to us really. Working with the, you know, working with the police department, it wouldn't really be at a public level where they need to be located or what the police department feels they need to see. They've already kind of considered that, so they, they are in the know and have a lot of connections with that.
You know, I look at the money that we've reinvested in the school and especially in the science labs and redoing the gym and to find out afterwards that somebody came in and we have no idea who it was, I would find that very frustrating. So I think we have to protect them, so.
So for this purpose, this grant was up to $2,000. So we haven't, you know, it doesn't preclude, this didn't preclude anything else from happening, but I, I think it's good that it's opening up a discussion. And it has a quick turnaround time of only, I think, maybe two weeks, and that might be a little bit generous. So we thought, let's go after what we know we need, which is a replacement and upgrade to just the entrance and the two entrance and exit cameras and, and the infrastructure there, and then have the discussion. So happy to hear you want to have the discussion.
And actually, the grant was a, is a magic grant, so you already are putting in $2,000. Thank you very much. As part of the budget process. That's the only way we would get to $2,000 is if we match it. So, you know, we'll start off with a $4,000 setup here, but again, build it so that it can be easily expanded.
Bill, just briefly, are there any other of our buildings that we need to think about this for? I know the letter referenced that the Ahrens got some stuff already from Sonatrol, but.
Right. Again, I think, I think once we do this building with the digital version of it, the networked version of it, we're going to see the advantages of going away from the old Sonatrol systems and going into this direction. And again, you know, you could use this in every building. There's, I'm sure there would be a good case for any of them. So I think that's.
To be continued.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Why don't you just stay right where you are?
Actually, would you mind if I flipped? There's some kind of different switches that are on there for the computer.
Yeah, go ahead.
And final NEASC report, Mrs. Spinelli and Mrs. Myers-Pacola.
So my usual introduction, we did all of Dianne's report on. As you know, the 10-year accreditation process called NEASC, which is New England Association of Schools and Colleges. A credit, accreditation process. And typically it occurs every 10 years, as you know, ours went 11 years because of the completion of the building renovation and they wanted to wait and come this, so this past March. They were onsite this past March when Sipiras was still here. It is a whole school process that starts almost two years before through self-study and getting ready. So I want to first thank, you know, all of the high school faculty and the other district-wide faculty administrators who are involved in it. It is a lot of work that occurs over a long period of time and, but I really find it insightful so, you know, to read the report. So I know the committee will find, have found some things in it that I hope you're, you know, happy that you see the results of your hard work in there. I certainly did. And Diana has prepared a wonderful summary overview of the report, which I sent to you about 10 days ago, knowing that it would take you a while to read it. So I'm going to turn it over to Diana.
I'm excited. Welcome. I too just want to extend kudos to the entire faculty and staff. Having been through this process in other districts, it's an incredible amount of blood, sweat and tears that does go into this. And my understanding, and Sue Carl was one of the members of the steering committee, who's also here tonight for another presentation, that there were no surprises in the report that was read. For the public, it's 88 pages of length. It is something that is published. It should be up at our website after this meeting, if not already up. And so let me just take you through the process a little bit and then we'll go from there. So the background, just to refresh, which Mrs. Spinelli did just talk a bit about, is that NEASC is the oldest of the six regional accrediting agencies in the United States in this particular region. That within NEASC itself, within that organization, there are commissions on public secondary schools, there is a commission on foreign American schools, there's a commission on elementary middle. So there are, all of those commissions, we fall under the Public Secondary School Commission. And they are responsible for matters, as you can see, regarding our evaluation and our And the CPSS requires that a visiting committee assess the degree to which our school does meet the standards of accreditation as based upon what the commission has come up with, what NEASC has come up with. So there are standards by which all schools are measured. There is a grouping, there's seven standards altogether, one grouping of teaching and learning standards that include core values, beliefs and learning expectations, that includes all of our curriculum, all of our instruction and assessment of and for student learning. The other standards fall under the support of teaching and learning. And those include the school culture and leadership, school resources and the community resources for learning. The accreditation process itself, or the program for accreditation for public schools is threefold. First is the self-study. Then there's an onsite evaluation. We had 16 members, I believe it was, of the visiting team coming in. And then there's the follow-up. And the follow-up portion of it, which we're now in, is going to be carried out by the school and the purpose of which is to implement the findings of our own self-study, and that's very important because a huge part of this process was that self-study as mentioned in number one. And so our school came up with our own commendations that we felt that we did very, very well, and also to those areas that we felt that we could make improvements upon. Then what happens is that visiting committee comes in and then they too come up with what they think are commendations and what they also view as being recommendations. So the self-study here in Foxborough took place over 17 school months. And to thank the steering committee, just so that everybody has this, we had Christine Smith as a chairperson out of the World Language Department, Scott Baum Science Department, Sarah Bryant English, Sue Carl Math and Tom Murray from Social Studies. Sue, did I miss anybody?
Sarah and Christine.
Co-chairs.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. So then the visiting committee, the part two after that, is that the visiting committee comes in and they were here in March of this past spring. And the visiting committee itself builds its professional judgment on evidence collected from several sources while they're here. They review the school's self-study materials. They did 48 hours of shadowing 16 students for a half a day. If you remember, they came in on a Sunday, they were here through a Wednesday. They had a total of 34-plus hours of classroom observations in addition to the time that they spent shadowing the students. They had numerous informal observations in and around the school. They had tours of the facility. And they had individual meetings with 32 teachers about their work, instructional approaches and the assessment of student learning. Having said on a committee, it's an exhaustive process. And just to let you know, the visiting committees are made up of peers and those are educational peers. Everybody from school principals to teachers to librarians to support staff. And they really do try to have a mix on these committees as well as your, your chair and your co-chair of that visiting committee as well. They also had group meetings with students, with parents, with school and district administrators and with teachers. And they did an examination of student work, including a selection of work that was collected by the school that teachers submitted in. Then what happens after all of this is gathered, the committee itself is divided into subgroups, one for each of those standards. And each of those subgroups writes a conclusion. That conclusion is then reported back, read to the entire committee and the committee agrees to it by consensus. And there can be some arguing back and forth over certain things. Each of those standards has certain elements, which you may remember that we have to meet. And what happens is if you get to a place of one of those elements and they say, no, we do not find this, that's where it stops and then that's where a rating would come in. We don't have a rating as of yet. So the seven standards for accreditation, those reports include commendations and recommendations that the visiting's, the visiting committee's judgment, and their judgment will be helpful to the school as it works to improve teaching and learning and to better meet commission standards. So our commendations, and again, this, these are not all of our commendations, nor are they all of our recommendations. These are highlighted pieces. And I would also say, which I did in the printed version, is to really, to get a full flavor of this and to, if you just pulled out the recommendations and you pulled out the commendations, they really don't give you a true flavor of the whole view because they do go into more detail. And sometimes you're reading something in the report and you don't necessarily see that exact recommendation or that exact commendation, but it is there. So between, again, the full report, these recommendations and commendations as well as the self-study, that's going to put us in the direction that we'll be going into. But for our commendations regarding teaching and learning. Core values and beliefs, one of the strands. They fully complimented us on the fact that our core values effectively communicate our beliefs about learning, that our core values and our beliefs about learning are guides for policies, decision-making, reflective practice, and that there's a true strength of partnership between the high school and the community and that this does have a direct influence on the educational experiences that students have here at FHS. Regarding curriculum, they spoke very highly about a comprehensive curriculum that we provide, that we have a diverse amount of extracurricular activities for students, that we have a focus on empowering students to become thoughtful, reasonable and productive citizens, that we have a strong curriculum that emphasizes depth of understanding and application of knowledge, focusing on inquiry, problem-solving and higher-order thinking. We always talk about 21st century skills and what's necessary, these are certainly right there. And that we do have a curriculum that is aligned between what is written and what is taught. Sometimes you go into a place, you see the written, you go into a classroom and you're, where, where does all this fit? That was not the case that was here.
That one was actually very important to me, that they said, because that's a very common problem to have, is the disconnect between the written curriculum the district says is in place and what you actually see. So to me, that was one of the best things to read, that they found that congruence.
Also along the lines of curriculum, that there are authentic learning opportunities both on and off campus that are offered, that there are assessments that have a focus on student mastery of our 21st century learning expectations, that leadership, meaning our department heads and the administration are very active in the delivery of curriculum with walkthroughs and our professional goals, we make sure that those are aligned to building in district initiatives, they share its SMART goals. So all of those all play a part. And that there is also a comprehensive academic program that offers students a wide variety, and this is important, of courses and opportunities to participate in those activities, the athletic end, community-based learning and project-based activities. And in particular, they did cite the music program as an outstanding program. Moving on to instruction, oops, sorry. How do I go back? Somebody help. Bill, will this take me back? Where's Bill?
Just page back.
Page back? Oh, page up, page down.
Up arrow.
Is it going to go?
Use the arrows.
Oh, got it. It wasn't moving. So I got nervous. That, where are we here? Instruction, here we go. Shilla got a little fancy on me. Love her. Oh, it's not sticking. I just need patience. Wolf need be, I'll just do this without the vision.
It's flashing, it's weird.
I know.
It's strange. Carrie left.
Hit the arrow again. Okay.
Okay.
I don't know if you, I don't know if you talk and he will.
I'm going to do it off of my own chips.
No, it's unvolunteering, so.
It's okay if it zooms the other way. So as far as instruction is concerned, we do have a general focus on the, on depth over breadth, which is also important.
Go past it so you can get to the next one and not worry about that one.
There we go. Thank you. That it is tailored to meet individual student needs, that teachers do differentiate instruction and work to provide inquiry-based experiences for students so that they're able to dig in and try to resolve and solve for themselves, that teachers are dedicated to their students and to their craft, that there's a commitment to professional development and growth by teachers and that this is supported by the district, that there's a strong sense of pride and a thankful spirit that permeates the building and that there's a positive school climate and culture here.
That's awesome.
Those last two.
Those last two.
It's so nice when outside people notice that.
So assessment of and for learning, again, still in the commendations, that there are frequent and informal examinations of evidence of student learning to make informed decisions about our curriculum. Do we need to make changes? Do we not? And for improving instructional practices. How come they didn't get it? What did I do? You know, that's that self-reflection as a teacher. What can I do to make sure that students are going to be achieving mastery? Common assessments are given. Formative assessments are often used. They also highlighted our strive for 85 as being reflective of empowering students to strive for excellence. And again, if a student is a senior with an 85 average, then they're exempted from their final exams, if I have that correctly remembered.
Unless they want to take them.
Unless they want to take them, of course. And students have the opportunity for revision and correction and thus that allows for deeper understanding and authentic growth for students as learners. So now support of teaching and learning. So now, support of teaching and learning. Our school culture and leadership, that the climate here is very positive, supportive, enthusiastic, and appreciative. That there is a successful administrative team here. Mr. Theodos was viewed as very supportive, visible, upbeat, and positive. And that the assistant principals, Mr. Heinrecker and Mr. Delaney, are also highly visible and closely connected to the school. Thus, it's a very good team, and I'm hoping that that's continuing as is. That the faculty strives to meet the needs of every student, and that they dedicate a great deal of time to the classroom and after-school activities. I can't say enough about that, between the extra help after school, and the number of faculty members that either are volunteering to do committees, or our coaches, or our advisors, whatever it may be, or just there to support because they're on the playing field when there's a game. It's just amazing. And that students truly appreciate the efforts and are engaged in the life of the school. So, again, all things that have been commended for the school. And for school resources for learning, that FHS has numerous programs and services to meet student needs, including our building-based support teams, other support services, counseling services, the group guidance program, alternative learning programs, et cetera. All of those things were cited as being so very positive here. That our media center library is well-equipped with current resources and technology. Under community resources for learning, the community has a commendable history of providing dependable funding for the school's academic program. That the budget process is comprehensive and inclusive, with staff having opportunities for input. They praised the renovation and the facilities that we have. They particularly praised, praise was given for the work and for the usage of how the buildings and the grounds are used. They also highlighted the work of the custodians and the plant manager, who all helped to enhance the positive environment here. It's that whole sense of pride that's very evident. Community resources continued, that parents are involved in the life of the school, and are appreciative of the efforts of the school to keep them involved and informed, and that there's a strong, that there is strong community support and significant relationships with local businesses and post-secondary institutions that directly benefit our students and the staff here at FHS. Teaching and learning, I didn't break these down into the standards, I just kind of grouped these under the two larger headings. So, it has been recommended that we evaluate, standardize, and revise the analytic schoolwide rubrics. We're in the process of putting that together as we speak. Not a surprise at all, the staff was able to use them. They've already said we need to make changes in them, that they're well aware, and so we're going to be moving on with that piece. They've suggested that we revise the common template for curriculum, to include units of study, 21st century learning expectations, and sample assessment practices. It's not that they're not there, it's just that, and our teacher share oftentimes is where unit assessments will be found, or other formative assessment ideas. And so, the suggestion was by the visiting committee, is that you have those all in one document, so that they're easily accessible, or it's an attachment that you can easily find, and that you don't have to look into a couple of different places. To increase formal and informal opportunities for teachers to collaborate within and across content areas for purposes of increasing cross-disciplinary instruction, among other outcomes coming from that. When you can collaborate between departments, much more can come from that. So, we'll be looking for that. To increase the teacher integration of the use of formative assessments into instructional practices as checks of student progress prior to having that final summative assessment. And again, it's just to increase the numbers. They also, and again, kind of, this came from a couple of different areas, but professional development was seen, perhaps, that would be very good for staff, in the areas of formative assessments, differentiation of instruction, higher-order thinking and problem-solving, and authentic learning experiences. They have commended us for doing that, they're asking us to stretch, to do more than what we currently are. They have also suggested development and use of formal and consistent data analysis protocols. We do have our data teams, but to also be able to dive down a little bit deeper. MCAS, are all of us looking collectively at the high school, at what English, math, and bio are doing, and what else can we do in other departments to be able to help in the writing process, or in the answering, the analytic, whatever it might be. So, a different, taking a different look, at a different view. And continued development and implementation of our social and civic learning expectations. Support of teaching and learning. So, research, evaluate, and ensure that time is provided to enhance delivery of small learning communities and discussions within and among various departments. Again, that kind of comes into finding some more time. Study and implement ways to deliver more heterogeneous learning opportunities within our school, to ensure that every student is enrolled in at least one heterogeneously grouped core course. That means in English and math, the science, and social studies, what am I leaving out? The history. And also studies, English, and science.
World language.
World language, thank you. And at least one of those during their high school experience. And they have suggested, again, a review of the current master schedule to ensure that the structure of the school day best enables all students to develop deep and lasting understandings of the school's curricular goals, including 21st century learning expectations. Suggestions, develop and implement a plan to integrate library skills into the school's curriculum, through more collaboration between the library media center and curricular areas. To develop and implement a more detailed, executable, did I do that right? Three-year technology plan that will ensure availability of the technology required in support of achieving the school's 21st century learning objective. Mrs. Spinelli had alluded to this a little bit earlier. And also tied to that is the development, to develop and to implement a plan to enable student and staff to use wireless technology in this building. So, while we do have the computer labs, which are wonderful, that other technology of being able to utilize it in areas where we don't have a lab, is something too that they're suggesting strongly that we do. Develop and implement a, implement a plan to improve and update outdated areas of the school, such as the auditorium. We're already on our way with the light. That was huge, just to have that. And if, I know folks took a tour, and if the public hasn't yet, wait till they go into that auditorium. Of which, I'll put a plug in, there's a jazz concert, wonderful jazz concert, Thursday night, seven o'clock, gives you the opportunity to see the auditorium, and to listen to the music program. And then, they have also suggested to finish developing and implement the facilities plan to include additional field space as soon as, oops, I should say reasonably possible. What are our next steps, then? These are the highlighted recommendations that they have given to us. So, we have, from now until the next ten years, really, is what we're looking at, of what are we going to be doing? They have a five-year plan for us. Well, we should be finishing up everything within about the next five years. But for the rest of this school year, so we're going to start there first. One is that there will be, we're going to be putting together new standards committees. The purpose is to review the report and the narrative, the recommendations and the commendations, to look for areas of critical need, and to prioritize the recommendations. So, this isn't going to be the in-depth study that these curriculum teams had done earlier, that these committees had done earlier, but we're going to mix it up again, it's a new look. Sometimes if you're looking at the same thing through the same lens, and you're reading what this report is, you might not quite have the same eye as somebody else that's reading and seeing a little bit differently. So, we're going to mix up those teams. We've just asked for the staff to give us their number-one, number-two, and number-three choice. So, this is going to be really putting together an action plan. And then, the follow-up committee, and then I'll talk about the joint on this one, but also, we need to put together a follow-up committee, which is really another steering committee. And that this follow-up committee is going to help to coordinate this whole program. They're going to serve as advisory to administration, they're going to assist the faculty, as the other steering committee had, in really, the knowledge of 2011, because that's what our, our visiting team in this particular report is based on. And they're going to help to write any of the special progress reports that we need to write. So, that'll be a part of what the follow-up committee is going to do. Also, two of our standards committees, they are going to take a look at our self-study, and pull out, and glean from there, any other critical areas that we saw that might not be in this report, again, to go into that action plan for what we're going to need to do. This just does a little flash dance here. And then, for summary. It should be kept in mind, and sometimes this can be difficult, to think, especially as a staff, we just finished the self-study, the team just came in, now they're giving us this, we're kind of done, and we put this on a shelf. It isn't like that any longer. And that this accreditation process is continual, and it is cyclical. So, it never goes away. And we're striving to become the best that we can, based on the standards that have been set forth by the commission. So, for us, we've agreed, and we're going to continue, to meet the standards for accreditation that reflect best practices for teaching and learning. And we're going to, we want to continue to demonstrate school improvement, monitored through peer review, which will be ourselves. And then, eventually, this whole process, again, with a self-review, will start all over again. The commission currently, the NEAS commission currently has this final draft of our report, the 28th and the 29th, but again, with the whole storm, I'm not quite sure what has happened on that. They are voting on what our status is. They will also vote as to whether or not they are looking for any special reports to come out of this. We will get that letter soon, you all will have a copy of that as well, that should be coming, I would think, within the month, before month's end, but I can't guarantee that. We know that we will have a two-year report, we know that we will have a five-year report.
Those are mandated.
Those are mandated. And then, if there are any other special reports, then they may well do that. For instance, you know, they could say to, one of the recommendations that you may have remembered if you had read it, was that they said to finish up outside, you know, with the ground, I didn't even put that in because it's done. You know, so that's already something we can check off to send back to them on a, on a report. And it has been, and the whole timeline of all of this, is that nearly all of our recommendations should be done by the five-year mark, is what they ask. But again, we have those standards that are there, we're constant, constantly going to be looking, you know, that's, that's the ultimate, and that's, that's the eye on the prize. And that's what we're constantly going to be looking for.
Just to give people who haven't read the whole report an idea of how comprehensive it is, that when they were talking about the facilities, they went into detail about
Absolutely.
The driveway, the parking lots, the poor condition, the curbing, the grass area that needs to have, all of those things they commented on, and said that they need to be part of our plan to finish that up. So, they were here in March, so if they ask us for a special report on that, luckily, we did continue to pursue that. But those things are important to an accreditation committee, that they look at your entire, they don't just look at your programs, they look in the classroom, outside the classroom, what does the whole high school have to offer, and what needs attention by the community, and by the high school itself? So...
They look at funding, they look at everything.
They do. They get all kinds of reports about finance, budget, some things we have to get from town hall, some things we have ourselves, but they look at absolutely everything to see how well things are supported, whether the district has the, this good direction for the high school, whether we're understanding of our own needs, and where we are, and where we need to grow. It really is quite detailed. And that's why the comment was made about the fields, and the parking areas, and the driveway, and the...
Tech report, comprehensive, the whole thing.
Everything, technology report, what was good about it, and what was lacking in it, which is, you know, the type of detail, or the executable plans, as they said. So, they pretty much look at absolutely everything, and that's why it's eighty-nine pages.
Having lived through the last accreditation, and I knew you were here at that time, one of our big concerns as a committee and as a community was the dire straits that this building was in. And one of the reasons, I think, we wanted them to postpone for a year, was so that our science lab could be top-notch when they came in here. And I think when you invest in being in NEAS, and you ask them to come in and do the work, we as a committee and a community are obligated to listen to what they have to tell us and act on. And I can honestly tell you that the deplorable condition of our science lab, if they had shown up here, and we hadn't done that, I would lay odds we would not be accredited as a school. And shame on us.
That's a biggie.
That was, that was huge.
That would put us...
They would have just probably walked out of here and said, "Are you kidding me?" So, I think when you invest in a school system, when you're dedicated to making sure that the students have the best physical plant, you know, and it's like anything else, if people show up to an environment that's inviting, and up-to-date, and positive, you know, the teachers are happy, the administrators are happy, but most important, the students know that we really care about them, that we take invested interest in what they're doing. So, I think when somebody gives us recommendations, that we just can't toss them aside, or say, "Well, we've got five years to catch up on this." It is a work in progress, and we have to make sure that we're paying attention to it every day, and that we get the community behind it, and we do these open presentations, so people understand that we are committed to quality education, and equality policy. And I think, the more we invest in this building, the more we keep it up, it's to everyone's advantage. I think it's a shining star, you know, compared to what it was three years ago. I'm thrilled with what we've done, and we've come a long way, and we've done some extra things because we were able to, and that's what's important. And I'm sure you're shocked and amazed at what we've been able to do here.
It's fabulous.
It is. You know, and because you were here before, and to come back to it, I'm sure it was a breath of fresh air for you. Because you knew all the work that needed to be done here, so, you know, kudos to the community for supporting us.
I just want to say too, Martha, I mean, it's our obligation as a school committee, and as, obviously, listening to the administrators, to ensure that we are adhering to the commission's regulations and standards. And I think, given the fact that the accreditation is a long process, it's every ten years, and yet, there are those certain timeframes in between, that, you know, it wouldn't be unusual if some, you know, sometimes people lose sight of that, and don't realize, you know, those out, you know, outside of maybe, direct, you know, contact with the school, that this is our obligation, not only as a committee, but as a community, to ensure that we are meeting those standards, so...
Well, I think it's important when our students try to apply to colleges, that they're coming from a NEAS-accredited school system.
Of course.
Oh, absolutely. That is detrimental to us.
I mean, to not have that, and try to get our kids into the best schools, it's like, you know, what standard are we being measured by? And our students are being measured by? So, it's, you know, when you write up your report, your guidance report, and it shows that we're NEAS-accredited, that holds a lot of water, and it's very important for our students who are applying to schools. So, it's something that every school system should be invested in. I don't know if every school system is aligned with NEAS, I don't know.
I don't know if a school in...
In this area.
Really, in Massachusetts, truthfully, but, I mean, there could be some that are out there, but I don't know of one, private school, potentially.
It's pretty standard, in a way in particular, to have it. But I think it's, it's important, because if you see progress, because I know that guidance was one of the concerns of the reporting, visiting committee last time. And I just thought, that section was great, they were very detailed and complimentary about not only the staff, but the services offered, and how it meets the comprehensive needs of all students. That was a great thing to see, since so much work has gone into that, you know, at this committee level, and in the school. And then, I was also happy for students, as it mentioned in there, how students contribute to that, safe, and, and the pride in the environment, and keeping it clean. And I think that is more rare than it is common. And the kids were really a key part of the visiting team, and squiring them around the building. So, I was, I was happy to see that they acknowledged, they noticed in the students, that they are an important part of the pride for the building, and the contribution that they make.
You can't help but notice that. And truthfully, it's so nice that they noted it, but you can't help but notice it when you're in this building.
Goes a long way. I mean, there's some school systems that are really struggling, and when you have, you know, NEAS on board, you know, if you need to change something, there's a substantive change form that needs to be filled out, that you need to tell them honestly, you know, "We can't afford this, we can't do this, and this is why we're backtracking on this." And they might not like it. You know, and they might say, "You know what? You can't do that." So, I think we, we have to stay on top of it, and we have to be, you know, moving in the right direction all the time, and not backpedaling.
I also want to just thank Diana for compiling all this, you know, this information out of eighty-eight pages. I think it's really, really concise and helpful, and just thank all the people that obviously were part of that process.
So, it writes nice reports.
Yeah. It's everybody here, I mean, it's from within this building, it's the community, it's you folks as well, it's the members of the visiting committee who came in, too, that take the time to do that. But, I mean, truly, it's the hard work of a lot of people here, and, you know, that seventeen-plus months is really, it's a two-year process, but it's much more than the two years, because that two years is the, is the self-study that you're doing. But realistically, that work was going on long before that two-year process began. And so, it's just a continuation of that.
It's the day-to-day process of just, of being and doing, doing the work, and obviously, it speaks to the commitment of, of the staff.
Bruce? Just for the benefit of the public, it seems to me, Diana, like this is a very balanced report, that they did. As I read through it, it seemed thoughtful. And I would think this would be a nice tool for someone in the public to look at, if they have questions about what the high school's like, if their kids haven't been to the high school yet.
Sure.
If they're contemplating alternatives, I think this is a nice summary. It's not just all rosy, but I think it, it's balanced. But I, you know, I've heard the reactions to some of the committee members, I'd be curious to hear just a little bit about your reaction, and your staff's reaction to the report, and also, maybe, one or two areas of the recommendations that you're excited to, to dive into, that you maybe read and said, "Wow, I really like the idea of that," or, "Wow, that's a great one, and we can really do things with that." Maybe you could just share a couple thoughts on those.
I'm like, all over the place on that. The staff does know that it's out there, and that it is out on the, on the teacher's share for them to dive into it. They're a little bit stressed at this point, on a variety of things, including... They're a little bit stressed at this point on a variety of things, including grades closing, so I'm not sure how much they have actually...
The new evaluation system.
And the new evaluation system. I was kind of imagining... So, it has gone out with a request for, would you like to be considered to be on the next steering committee, which is the follow-up committee, and then which of the standards committees? We have a faculty meeting on Wednesday that will be getting into this a little bit more. And I hesitate to say what my excitement would be because I truly, I would really like to see where the staff is coming from and where the committees are going to look back, or I should say, put forward as what they think are critical need areas. I'm all about the curriculum and the instruction piece, so, I mean, that's kind of where I always go to first thing. But it'll be interesting. I'll be, I'll be interested to see it again. I just don't want to cloud it.
It's good to have this, as we're supposed to follow the process of letting them identify their priorities. But I, so I'll, I'll take you off the hook because it is good to allow her staff to let that bubble up. But I will tell you personally, I'm, I would expect you to hear me say I'm diving into some kind of plan for the wireless environment. So, I'll tell you right now, I'll own that one and we'll see where we go. Well, you have to have a plan. I don't know how much the cost or what the barriers are, but I think not going forward means we don't understand it and we don't know what the barriers are and what the cost would be. So, my goal this year is to understand what that would take, what the barriers are and what the cost would be. So, I'll dive right into that and then the staff, I'm sure, will put that as a priority. But if they don't, it's mine anyway, so...
I have two staff members, yes? Yes. So, I would, I would have to say, yes, if I was going to dive into any one thing in particular and put my head right out there, it would be more on the technology here for what we can do and the rest of it for, for the staff to really bubble up without me...
Well, then I'll let you off, I'll let you off the hook too.
I'll be back to let you know. I will be back to let you know, I promise you that.
And if the staff, when we get to our next agenda item and they happen to speak, if they want to throw out anything, they're, they're welcome to do so. But, but yeah, please, I mean, I understand the timing, so let them digest. But I think it would be interesting for the committee to hear what your priorities are and how we can help.
And that'll be our action plan because it'll be the staff that's going to be coming up in that new follow-up committee that will be really prioritizing what they feel are really the needs. And you may see that in a variety of areas, including budget. Who knows where that could all come from?
Excellent. Well, first, I thought the level of detail in this report was amazing. I learned so much about the high school, not having children here yet. It was a great resource, as Bruce said. The other thing I wanted to note, just for the, the public at home, is there were several mentions in here of Faces, the Foxborough Community Enriching Schools, and the opportunities that that provides to teachers through their grants. I just wanted to take the, a moment to thank the people who've worked so hard on that effort for the last, I think they noted that we've given out over $138,000 worth of grant money to allow teachers to do different things within the curriculum that they might not otherwise have been able to do. So, I just thought that was worth mentioning as well.
It is, absolutely.
It's exciting to hear what you're going to do going forward.
And that's too, that's why, when I said it's really important, I think, for people to dive into that full report, because again, the commendations and the recommendations tend to be more general to things, and I should have picked up on that actually and really said thank you to the Faces piece of it too. But again, I think that comes through that community support in so many ways that it does come through.
And they realize, the committee commented on how supportive it was.
Yes.
I mean, so, I think Foxborough goes above and beyond with the parent support, extra parents support.
Absolutely.
And not just parents, but the, the whole community.
That is really a community, yes.
And that, that is nice kudos for the community because we ask so much of the community to support us in the schools. It's nice that they get a thank you besides our thank you. It's nice that they get the recognition.
Yes.
Good, good point, Tina.
You should highlight that part on the website.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much, Diana.
Okay, MCAS analysis, part two, Mrs. Spinelli and Jacque Burtis.
All right. Well, she's getting set up as a segue. Out of the NEAS report, I hope you as committee members can see how much you had in there as well, in terms of support for all the initiatives at the high school. I think that was pretty clear that your standing up and supporting the senior for the schools has been critical to almost to everything that you read in the report. So, on behalf of the NEAS school district, I'd like to thank you.
And it was really, it was really exciting. I found, break meeting through it and realized we had already accomplished some of their things. Right, and the last two, of course, the auditorium's one of my favorites, but then...
Right. That's right, you had another time they were here.
I know, and tying into our, our warrants, I mean, we need more field space.
I know. We're working on all of it.
That's right. I just thought, wow.
We're trying.
We're trying.
Yep. So, as you remember, Amy presented MCAS analysis part one last time, which was what we call like standard royal plate, you know, what are the results and what are the numbers and here you go. And then, as we have done the last few years, MCAS analysis part two is a little bit more diagnostic, involves our department heads and curriculum directors. And, and Amy, they have worked very, very hard to tell you what we think all those numbers actually mean in practice. So, I'll turn it over to Jacque Burtis.
So, you have up at our guest table, Mr. Mitchell, he's talking to you, and Mrs. Carl from the high school. We debate, I say each year, last year for me for the first time, the best way to go about this with all of the information, there's so much that's here. So, what we decided was to focus on grade spans, high school, middle school, and elementary versus what we did last year with math and the K to 12. Because parents that are home, they may have only elementary children and they want to focus on elementary. So, what we wanted to do this evening was, first of all, kind of go over a little bit of district-wide data, go over the process that we went through, focus on the high school, and then we'll move from that direction. So, we're going to have some play back and forth, and the only reason I'm not joining them at the table is the technology to make sure that we can have that working for us. So, the first part of the packet that you had, had some district-wide data, because we use multiple data points in addition to MCAS, obviously. And one of the things that you see that I've highlighted there, I, I think it was an important highlight, and that's our English language learners, because we've more than doubled the number of students that we have in Foxborough where English is not their first language. We are considered a low incidence district, meaning we don't have a lot of students, but we still are mandated by all of the guidelines to follow from the standards that we teach and to make sure that we're servicing those students where English is not their first language. And there's a lot that goes along with the curriculum with their needs. So, we've moved from last year, we had eight students, to 18. And this can change in a day. We first identify students who come in from, on our entrance paperwork, to be quite simple, about what is the language that's spoken at home and their first language. So, when we look at a number like that, I think it's important because it really does impact our programming, to see that we've increased there more than, doubled than what we had last year. When we look at some other data points, our free and reduced lunch numbers, you can see that from 2011 and actually the last four years, we're increasing there at the, for district-wide, we've increased almost 3% for students that are eligible. Obviously, I think that this can speak to the economy of where we've been in the last couple of years specifically.
Well, we've almost doubled in the last four years.
Right.
Right.
And it's, it's increasing. When we look at other data, such as our special education population, we'll see that it's, just scroll down a little bit there, that there are some slight increases more at the secondary level, but you see them being reduced at the elementary level. And I think that in thinking about all of the initiatives with response to intervention and catching students and providing those interventions early on, that you see those percentages, percentages decreasing. And I think that speaks to the services that we're providing and catching students early on with interventions in the classroom. Any questions on those two? So, moving along here, our process, Debbie was stating before, remember that last school committee meeting, we talked about the overall, kind of the 30,000 view of our MCAS data? So, we took that information and we really drilled down to see, well, what does that mean from a programming standpoint, the curriculum, the instruction that's taking place? Also, look at the other data points that we have, our baselines and benchmarks and the assessments, and what happens day-to-day in the classrooms? It's very important that we take the information that we have, the data, and put it into context, especially knowing with MCAS as an example, we know that it's different students every year, we know that it's a different test every year. So, at the high school, last year, we ended a three-year stint with having three-year rolling averages and goals that were set for three years later. And this chart here is just showing where we had our baseline from 2006 to 2008, our benchmark that we had set, where we were three years later. And if you might remember, all of the arrows, the checks that we had last year on this presentation to show, here were our goals and we met all of those goals. So, if you look here at the high school and looking at MCAS for ELA, math, and science, we exceeded actually those goals. The second-to-last column there is 2012 data for MCAS. Typically, you would have seen another three-year rolling average that was there. We did not do that because it did not make sense, because three years from now, we will not have MCAS. It will be changing to the PARC assessment, which stands for the Partnership for Assessment of Readiness for College and Careers. It is a national assessment that will be given online to our students in math and English Language Arts, not in science. So, it did not make sense in ELA or math to set a three-year goal. Once we have the PARC assessment in place, we will then set a new baseline and move forward from there. That complete name once more, please? The Partnership for Assessment of Readiness for College and Careers. The difference, MCAS is based on the standards and the standards are what students should know and be able to do, and it assesses students for mastery of those standards. The PARC is measuring students' college and career readiness. And actually, Mrs. Carl's going to talk a little bit from the math standpoint of some examples of how that will look different for MCAS as we move forward a little bit here. So, that's the overview. I'm going to turn it over to Walter first to talk a little bit about the summary trend statements that we have for English Language Arts. And then we'll talk about math and science before we talk more about the AP and the SAT data that we have.
Before they start, I just want to make sure we, trying to put this in context. Remember we talked at the last meeting or a few meetings about the baselines and benchmark reports? It's probably going to go away as it exists in this format because we want to turn many of the important pieces of it into a district report card, kind of more of a profile of the community of the district with some key data points. So, this is the last time you will see it in this format, and for a couple of reasons. Number one, we want to morph it into a more usable district report card that could, we could publish on a annual basis. And secondly, because much of it is going to be a moot point now, that all the assessments are changing. So, for a lot of reasons, it is timely for us to say, "It's not going to exist in this form anymore." When we first created it, the intention was to show the public how we don't judge the success of our students based simply on one assessment called MCAS. We base it on multiple measures of student achievement, and the report was quite comprehensive, showing you all the different data points that we collect and manage and monitor, which we still will. But that purpose for this format to be created, really, we have a different purpose now, which is you have a district kind of report card that's a little bit easier to share publicly. And what's happening inside this report is evolving as the national assessments evolve as well. So, I just wanted to make that clear, that that's why you're seeing some with no baselines and some pieces of this you'll still see. All of these data points we'll continue to monitor, but wouldn't be summarized in this form because most of it's shifting. Does that make sense?
Yeah, what about biology? You mentioned it's going to be English and math, not, not moving forward.
There's no national assessment right now for science.
Okay.
All right. So, that, just to give a little context.
Okay. Congratulations to the class of 2014. For the second year in a row, we scored nearly half the class as advanced in ELA. Which is extraordinary, I think. And then, for the second year in a row, we scored 94% of advanced and proficient. So, kudos to our students, they're, they're outstanding. To our staff, and I really attribute it to the kind of, not only attention the students are getting in the classroom, but we've really ramped up the way we teach nonfiction and through rhetoric and, and the way we teach writing through rhetoric. And I think those have paid immediate dividends. Also, I'd like to laud our writing across the curriculum program that Jeff Theodos instituted about three or four years ago, our One Book One School program where we're promoting literacy in Foxborough. I'd also like to laud the fact that we take the time and the money and the effort to bring tutors, very, very able tutors, ex-department heads in fact, and great teachers, to work with students one-on-one on essays and on, on tests and on reading, close reading skills. So, the system is just wonderful, it's been clicking. And I'd really like to, to thank the teachers in the English department because the progress that they've been able to show from students in really a year and a half's time, these students take this, this test as precocious 10th graders, is, is impressive. I mean, it's not like they're taking it as a junior or a senior. And when you look at the kind of passages that they throw at these kids, Emerson, Thoreau, these are abstract, very complicated passages that students of 10th grade, you wouldn't normally think can handle these passages. So, you know, way to go, Foxborough. Great job, kids, and we're proud of you.
Great. Okay. So, we were pleased with the math results again this year. We had had a goal to reduce the number of students that were in that needs improvement category, and we were able to do that by 5%. So, we were, we were happy with that success. We've been working as a department around our instruction and identifying the types of problems that were giving students difficulties and really working on those within the classroom. To piggyback on what Walter said, again, the tutors and the support staff up at ACT Lab are all really important tools that we have, that the kids have, to give them some of that extra support. So, as we move forward, you know, we're going to continue with that goal of moving the students out of the needs improvement and moving those students who are still struggling to pass the exam, moving them out of that category as well. So, part of our day tomorrow is actually looking at the MCAS data and doing some of that analysis and making some decisions on how we want to proceed and move that group that's still struggling forward. Do you want me to talk a little bit about the PARC right now?
Yes.
Just, I'm kind of here.
That would be great.
All right. So, the new standards that came into play not only are about content standards, but they're also about practice standards and what kinds of work do we want the students to be doing? Obviously, the math concepts themselves have not changed, but how we're going to expect students to apply them and how we're going to expect students to explain them and the reasoning that they have to be able to do. The PARC assessments are going to try to assess those practice standards as well as the content standards. We've looked at some examples that are up online currently. The exam itself is online and it's, it's no longer a static exam. The kids have a graph and they can transform it by sliders. So, they might be given a situation and then by adjusting sliders, create the correct model for that situation. In terms of some explanations, they're given word banks and paragraphs. We looked at one that had to do with a linear model and the students had to be able to explain what was the slope and that rate of change, what did it mean for that particular problem, what do the intercept mean? And they had to be able to read through that, grab the correct vocabulary and insert it into the correct spot. So, these are some skills that are very different than the types of things that we have been testing. They're going to continue to be tested on the content, but now we're going to get into that practice as well. So, I know we're looking forward to, if this is the assessment, what, what does the instruction need to look like so that the students are ready for this? So, that they are prepared for this as well as trying to get them into the computer if that exam is all on the computer, making sure that they're comfortable with that technology, that they're comfortable with some active, an active form of assessment and not just the paper and pencil, a dynamic form of assessment. So, that's where that's heading.
So, to try to recap what you just said, because I think it's important to try to, try to explain the shift, because it is pretty complicated.
Yeah.
So, as opposed to MCAS, the PARC is, is not only saying... So as opposed to MCAS, the PARK is not only saying to students, what do you know about these things, concepts and skills, and get a grade based on that or the score? It's what do you know about what you can do with that information?
Yes. It's an offline application.
What do you know and what can you do with it? Do you know what to do with the information? So the absorption of information is no longer going to be enough. It's do you know how to apply it, use it?
Correct.
And do something with it?
Correct. Can you model it? Can you compare and contrast if I give you some different scenarios? Yes.
And as Sue said, it's going to be an online assessment. So I think I may have mentioned at this table, the state about a month ago, maybe two months ago at this point, time flies, had asked all the districts in Massachusetts to assess our capacity, both in terms of computer labs and technology and hardware and staff, human capacity, to be able to administer an online assessment two years, a year, two years from now, a year from now. So they're starting to collect information about where districts are just to be able to administer the assessment. So it will not be a paper pencil test. So it's, you can imagine the amount of work that's going to go into this at the national level and at the state and the local level. So just when we get kind of our hands around the new evaluation system, we'll be getting our hands on that.
Right, right. And it's not just 10th grade either. It's an Algebra I assessment and a geometry assessment and Algebra II assessment. So the kids are going to see it for a few years here at the high school and not just that one, you know, 10th grade here.
So I loved your example about adjusting them all. It's not only do you, what is the slope of this equation? It's adjust that slope to make it fit this. Do you know how to even apply it to it? So I think that's a great example that can, that will help people remember.
The good thing is, is that there are some examples out there for us to look at and begin to digest and again, you know, adjust our instruction so that we'll have the kids ready for that when the time comes.
Thank you.
And there is not an assessment for PARK at this point in time for science. It will remain as is.
Yeah. The next couple of years will be very interesting in science because although there is no quote-unquote common core in science, as of right now, there's a 26-state group developing what is called the Next Generation Science Standards that I think may be ready for review in the spring. Concurrently with that initiative, the State Department of Ed is also examining and revising our present science standards because they were first released in 2006. And I think they have a target data of the spring for those as well. So we have these two parallel sets of standards. And I guess when they're both ready, the Department of Education will make a decision in terms of which direction the state of Massachusetts is going to go. So it's really, a lot is in a state of flux right now in terms of the future of the standards in science. But again, to echo the words of Walter and Sue, I mean, we're very pleased with the performance of last year's sophomores on the MCAS exam. We still had over 90%, probably closer to 95% pass on their first attempt. Our numbers of students advanced proficient are quite a bit above the state average. Numbers of students needs improvement failing well below the state average. Again, if I counted correctly, last year's group were the fifth group for whom this is a graduation requirement. So, you know, this is not new anymore. It's firmly ingrained in everything that we do. I think the earlier mention that the written curriculum and the observed curriculum match, I think we see that as well with the state standards. I mean, the state standards are infused in our curricula, but also it's what we're teaching. We're not teaching to the test, but we're teaching to the standards. And again, we're very, very pleased with that. I did add a summary data statement about our remediation efforts because kind of the flip side of having our students do so well is in terms of remediation. We're dealing with every small group of kids. And as things have turned out, we've been able to tailor our remediation to the needs of each student because it's a very small number of students. With some students, we're able to do it within their junior science course. We, some students work through the academic lab. We've had a very successful program that we call our MCAS Boot Camp where the Thursday before the MCAS makeup is normally a half-day because we're in the middle of mid-year exams. Well, we invite all those students taking the makeup. They show up at noon, we give them a little bit of pizza and we keep them until about 4:00. And, you know, it just gives us a wonderful chance at reminding them of the important key points, especially test-taking strategies. And it just seems that pretty much every kid who shows up to the boot camp just about does pass. And almost all of our students who don't pass the first attempt, who pass the second attempt. So again, we're, you know, very happy with that as well.
Will the National Park assessment start in my sophomore or junior year?
Junior. Am I right?
Yes. So our current freshmen will be the last ones to take MCAS as we currently know it. So they will take it as sophomores.
So he won't take anything after that? These kids, like Joey's class?
His class will take MCAS. And then they will be the last one to take MCAS. And then following that, students will take the PARK.
So he wouldn't?
He will not take the PARK. You will take the MCAS.
I'm asking, will the PARK, if the student took a PARK, would they, will that include the, will that include a portfolio?
No, you will be done.
Yeah, I'm talking about to the other students, like third, fourth, fifth.
We actually don't know yet in that type of situation.
So in addition to looking at data, obviously, from MCAS, some of our other, we have many data points that we look at. Some of the things you heard in the NEAS report, talking about the formative assessments and summative assessments, those common assessments that we are commended for, which are really, really important because that's much more regularly taking place. But the others that we report on here are the Advanced Placement, the AP exams, as well as the SAT exams. So you have in front of you, in your packet and also on the screen, Advanced Placement. You'll notice that the benchmark for 2015 is left empty. It was deliberately left empty. And the reason for that is because we've been having a lot of discussions as far as more philosophical and the students that are taking Advanced Placement courses. You might remember that last year, we had an AP potential night that was really well-attended. Having many parents come to find out about AP and students that may not have thought that they would be a good candidate to take an AP, to maybe rethink that depending on the different courses. So depending on which direction, where we're opening AP to more students or it's more in the current state than it is now, that's definitely going to impact our goals, whichever way we set those. So we did not want to set a goal at this point in time because of those.
But we do, you know, as you know, we have course selection by about mid-year. So in the next coming, in the coming months, we do expect to have conversations about where philosophically we'd like to go with AP. And if there, if we're, as Amy said, if we're going to stay with the current system of identification of students who have AP potential, might want to take AP, then we'll base the benchmarks on the information as we know it and our history as we know it. But if we come to a philosophy of opening it up a little bit more with kids who might be motivated to try it, then you might see a shift in how we set the benchmark. So you might see a difference in what number we set for the number we'd like to see AP students taking it because that would grow at maybe a slightly higher rate. And there's always the debate about, is usually, most typically, the research, the more students you have taking AP, if you really open it wide, your, the percentage of students scoring three or better tends to maybe decrease a little bit because you're opening it up to students who might not otherwise have taken AP. That hasn't happened here in Foxborough. We've had more and more kids taking AP and our average scores continue to rise. But if we opened it up even more, would that continue to be so? We're not sure. So we need a little bit more time to have our philosophical discussions about where we want to go with AP and then we will set a new benchmark.
And the table that was added, just to give you an idea, over the last five years, was we added, the last five years, pretty much shown the number of students that are taking AP courses because many times you look at the number of students and then the number of tests that are administered. Students are taking multiple AP tests. So it's important to look at how many tests are being administered, but at the same time, how many students does that account for? When you're then looking at how they're ferry and how we're preparing them for those AP exams.
And what about staffing? Will that become an issue for you?
Well, that's all, all, it has to be part of the plan. We have to plan for that.
I can answer that a little bit. We now, in the English department, have set out to train virtually everyone.
Awesome.
And let's see, I think, well, we've had two new teachers go to the two-day seminar this fall. We had one teacher take the week-long program at TAF this summer. And so right now, I think we have five teachers in the English department who are at least all or somewhat AP-trained. And we have two more going in the spring for two days. So not only does it help, you know, to have AP teachers, but it helps for the other teachers to know because they can set the table and set the bar where it needs to be in preparation for the kids coming up to take AP. And that's a key component there. In the past, we've been really reluctant to recommend students to take AP because there's kind of this mystique about AP and it's all so hard and this. Well, I think this has given us a better understanding that, you know what, this is doable. We can do it. And we can take some risks and we can push kids along. And of course, any student who wants to take AP here can, which is a nice thing. So it's moving in that direction. We need the money to do it, but we've got a district that has supported this all along.
So for example, just because we always talk about how much this costs, it's about $1,100 to $1,200, about 1,200 now, to train someone in AP to go to the institute, per person.
Is it worth everything?
So just to let you know, these are all parts of our budget challenge. We typically don't, we don't have that budgeted for. So we either look at district-wide PD money and we do that instead of something else. But it is, it is worth it. But it is not as simple as, you know, a workshop that's kind of low budget or anything. It's about $1,200 a person to become trained.
I think it's important for people to realize that these people just don't fall out of the sky, but you do have to train them and in a special way.
And you could go for AP Bio, for example, training. And if you want to go for AP Chemistry, that's another $1,200. It's completely separate. It's not, it is really intense and very content-driven.
Looking a little bit further down for SAT data. This is an area that we set new baselines with looking at the last three years and then looking forward. So we really took into account the 2006 to 2008, where we were assessing that three-year benchmark and where we were in relation to that benchmark, looking at a new three-year baseline and then setting our sights for the future, three years from now, which we'll come back annually to report out, but in three years, looking at where we've been, where do we, where are we setting our expectations? So you can see there in the three areas of the SAT for the verbal, the critical writing and the math, that those targets are exceeding, obviously, where we've been and looking at that three-year rolling average kind of takes into account those, you could have some years that are really different from year to year. So that helps to take into account those variables from the three years. The continuing education, when you're pushing up that high, I mean, we've got some nice numbers there as far as students continuing on. The increase, you're not going to see it as high of a jump just because we are kind of pushing the ceiling there to be.
Right. And there are some kids who are capable of going to college who might not be developmentally ready. And there are other kids who really want to go into the military and go that career route and maybe even that college route. And there are also kids who really want to work in a trade because that's where their type of learning style and where their brilliance kind of shines with, and we need those too. So I don't think it's, if people are looking at our goals, I think 92% going on to higher education is a good goal if we can maintain that pretty steadily because we have to acknowledge kids who have other interests and drives and talents that they might not fit into what people think of as a traditional college track, you know, immediate go to college the next fall.
Does it enter or factor into somehow the number of students you have taking? Because certainly, you know, you look at some of the charter schools and they have lower numbers and if they're, we're graduating a class of 200 and they're graduating a class of 25, then certainly their numbers are going to be off the record scale. And I think people need to understand that. And it's not that things are watered down, but we encourage kids to take the PSATs, the SATs, and the more that we get them acclimated to these tests. But unfortunately, when you have that wider range, you're going to get a different, you're going to have your highs, you're going to have your lows, and when you average them in, these are probably the numbers you're going to look at. And I think when you look at the MCAS and what's developed over a period of time and you look at the cohorts, you can almost predict where you're going to be because of where they are with the MCAS and the standards and what we expect on them. So I don't think there's any real surprises. I like the fact that we don't put our benchmarks so high that they're not attainable because I think that sends a bad message too. I think if you kind of keep them up the way we do, I think it's to everybody's advantage.
So that's the high school in a snapshot, looking at multiple data points. And a lot of time and effort goes into this with the teachers really diving down, as they were saying earlier, that tomorrow with our Staff Development Day, more time is going to be spent with data again as we move forward. So I would like to thank them personally for all of the work and the time that they've put into this. It's a lot, a lot of meetings and a lot of phone calls back and forth and emails too.
I would too. Because Walter was open his remarks by saying congratulations to the kids, but I want to congratulate the department heads too. And, you know, I wish the press was here tonight as they often are because a lot of the MCAS numbers are just that, numbers. But when we get to see our friendly faces behind the hard work, it's very meaningful to me and it gets me excited. Some of us have kids that haven't gotten here yet and it gets me excited to get our kids here. So congratulations to you guys and thank you.
No early retirement's the one you know.
That's right.
Not until Bruce's kids are around. And teens. They're the same age.
What I have learned though is sometimes when the press isn't present, they sometimes get the materials and they watch if they will conflict. So I'm not sure the press isn't tuned in right now. I hope they are.
Can I just say one thing? Unfortunately, when you take care of sick people, you get sick. And I wasn't at the last meeting, but, you know, the one thing that I always like to look at and you've gotten in the habit of doing is the cohorts. And I think when you look at the cohort numbers, because I never want us to compare this year's third grade and last year's third grade. And it's very impressive when you look at the eighth grade and where they are and where they, where we get them by this awful year. And I think we give a lot of credit to the high school and credit is due, but I think it's equally as important to understand that we form a very solid foundation with these students early on. And I think it, you know, and then the high school gets to expound on it. And I think when you look at those cohort numbers, it speaks volumes because where they were in the eighth grade and where they are in the 10th grade, it's very impressive. It shows the capabilities, but it also shows the talent within the system. You know, it's a joint effort and the communities involved, we're involved, but you people on the back end and I can't thank you enough for being here.
That's a really great point, actually. Because I think in the early days of the cohort, we would see kids, you know, especially in the first few years of MCAS, we'd see them, you know, until they knew it was a graduation requirement and we started to see those leaps at the high school. But I will say about the kids and the staff is that we're now starting to see that outstanding achievement at the middle school level. So our goal to send our kids to the high school appears to be evolving.
It's impressive. It really is.
So that's always a good thing.
As they invite our two directors, Alison Mello and Diane Casilla, up to the table as well. I feel funny in a sense with them going to sit back down as they are coming up because there is that piece, even though you've got K8 and the 912, the constant vertical conversations that are taking place is really, really strong here in Foxborough. And you can see that from a daily ongoing. So even though they may end at grade eight, their presence is felt at the high school as well. So inviting Diane and Alison up.
Which is where you're going?
The MCAS, as we talked about last time, we saw a lot of progress. Made very excited to see in the math and then ELA. When, I want to point out one particular data point. We talked about the tremendous growth that we saw in different areas and that in all of our grade levels and content, we would see the steady growth, that student growth percentile to high growth. And there was one particular, and it was English Language Arts in grade five. And we did not see the typical growth. And we questioned, well, we dove a little bit deeper because we found two different data points. And Mrs. Abrams, she will dive as deep as she can. And one of the things that we found out, which made a lot of sense, was the two different data points, the reason for that, when we looked at students that we've had in Foxborough that have been with us, so had our instruction and our teachers, that was the higher data point. So they were at the forty growth percentile, the steady typical growth that we're looking to see in that band. That was the only indicator that had a thirty-five percent growth percentile. And that took into account students that we did not have over time in Foxborough.
Let me see if I understand that. So this is the first I'm hearing, but so I'm trying to see. So the students who didn't spend their all the elementary years in Foxborough maybe joined us in fifth grade, their growth percentile was around.
When we took into account with our total population, we had a student growth percentile of thirty-five, which was on the lower growth. But when we looked at our student population that had been with us from prior years, the growth percentile was at forty. And we questioned this because we, looking at the different data points from the Department of Education and then another program that provides that data, we had two different growth percentiles and wanted to know,
That makes a lot of sense.
Well, why is that? Because so much work and effort has been put in to off-grade levels. And to see that one, and that was the reason. So when we have our own students with us, that's important.
It's pretty good, Mrs. Abrams. It's pretty good.
Well, it just has to be a reason for something that doesn't fit.
So going back to our baseline and benchmark goals, like the high school for English Language Arts and Math, we did not set new baselines for the future because of the PARC assessment. And like last year, the goals that we set and met those goals, for the majority of them exceeded them actually. You see that for English Language Arts and Mathematics. But I will turn it over to Diane first so she can talk a little bit about the deeper analysis that took place.
So going into my summary trend statements, I'm actually building on your last conversation. My first summary trend was that as we look at our student performance over time while they're here in the district, it improves. Typically, we see a slight dip in fourth grade when we have the addition of the long comp for the first time for our students. But then you, from that point, you typically see, as you look, when you look at the cohorts, that their performance will improve over time. So that's, I highlight that. Yes, the success of the high school is based down at the elementary, the work of our teachers. The second summary trend statement that I have for you is that when we, looking at that long comp performance over time, our students perform very well. Long composition is scored. They get a score for topic development versus the mechanics piece of it. And so we do the conventions. Our students perform very well with conventions, earning the majority of the points that are available to them. Topic development, they're still earning seven out of about ten points for topic development. So that's still an area of focus that we're continuing to work on. And this past spring and in the fall, we were able to have some professional development come in, especially as we look at the new writing expectations in the Common Core to really look at what do we need to do with our students structurally to help to bring them to that next level. So, and that involved teachers from kindergarten through eighth grade to help us address this trend that we see. The other summary trend statement that I have is looking at open response questions, which those are questions that are assessing students' comprehension of what they've read. And we did see a slight improvement this year. That was a focus for our instruction last year, really looking at what is it that our students, what do they show us in their work? Because we don't get to see their work from the MCAS. So using some of those samples in class with students and then saying, what are they presenting us with? So we were finding that our students are providing us with details, but it's not sufficient. They're not going deep enough in and exhausting the evidence that's there to support their answer. So that continues to be something that we'll work on again this year.
Amy, I just have a question. How do we compare to the state with the long composition? I'd have to look back.
Okay. I'm just wondering, what's being described here, is that similar to what the state is experiencing?
We exceed. We exceed the state performance, but I think it's a trend that you would see across in other districts. They still, they have the same type of struggles with the content, the topic development.
I was just curious. Just be two quick numbers, like what's the average score on the long comp in Foxborough? And what's the average score at the state? But, I mean, we typically are above the state. So there's no other, there's no relatives. You know how we looked, we talked about the reason we use the state is just to look at our relative strengths? There would be no relative, it's just in that, so I don't know.
Our average percent is higher.
Okay. Okay, I was just kind of curious.
And I don't have that data with me tonight, what the state's average.
But it does break it down that way, so you can look at the conventions versus the content.
Yeah, it is a good question. But I think internally, in my mind, it almost, we know we want that to be better. We know we can be better. So for us, it's an internal goal regardless of whether we're a little above or a lot above. We think we can do better than that, which is why Diane keeps that, you know, has that on the focus.
And with the shift to the Common Core too, we're really looking at three new types, well, not new types of writing, but three types of writing. And argument has become really the focus. So that's a piece of looking, moving forward too. That now they're looking for students to write narratives, opinion pieces up through grade five, and then it switches to an argument and also informative explanatory. So the real, and the new Common Core really asks students to base their writing and their discussions on content that's driven from the text, so what they read. Can they actually extract the information and help to support their arguments or their opinions? So our focus is really looking at the writing and helping students to develop those skills to be able to support their ideas and elaborate on them as well.
And multiple sources pieces in order to write those argument pieces as well. Which is using the details, which is what you're saying.
So that all of these kinds of writing are going to help in all subject areas, so. And we have been doing it for a number of years, but the new Common Core requires it to be a little bit different, a little bit more, I'd say intense with the non-fiction, I think.
Well, I know that I've seen an uptick in the writing, I guess, I don't know if that's a right word. But coming home with my children, I have a fifth grader and a seventh grader. And I've definitely seen different types of writing come home in the last couple of years that we hadn't seen earlier. I guess I'm a firm believer that the more they write, the better they get. And I would really love to see more. I know my now-seventh grader last year had book talks that once every, one day out of the six-day cycle, he had to have a writing assignment that had to be detailed. And I saw his writing progress throughout the year. And I think the more we can do that in the classroom, the better they're going to get.
Absolutely.
And then you just have to keep the writing, you know, going. It's just my personal opinion, but I think the more they write, the better they get.
That's exactly, it builds up their fluency. And they're not, the more they write, the less difficult they find it. It just becomes habits, what they do.
And I know with the details, I would read it, I'd say, you need more detail. I think it's good. She said I had to have three to seven sentences. And I said, well, I think it could be better. Turn it in. I said, sure, great, turn it in. Back, he'll say, you were right. I needed more detail. So I think that's good. I mean, it's translating, what you're saying, what you're doing with the teachers is translating down to the kids in the classroom. It's great.
A new word you might hear is elaboration, because now we're seeing not only details, but now you need to elaborate on your details.
Oh, and the argumentative piece, they're good at that. They're.
And there are a lot of great topics in those years.
There's grown arguers in my house.
Some of them have become attorneys, ones that were the best arguers.
Ones that are children of attorneys.
Oh, there you go.
Your grandchildren.
That's my son. We always say, you picked a great one.
Yeah.
It's just right up your alley. Adult, good young man.
And looking at the other data points, one of the other data points that we look at the middle school starts English Language Arts is the Scholastic Reading Inventory. And that's what you have in your packet as well, but I'll let Diane talk a little bit more.
So these are, I have to stop him. So the Scholastic Reading Inventory is a computer-based program that we use to assess students' writing. And as you can see, that we have the, our three-year report and then we've established the new base, we have our new baseline that we've established for grades five, six, seven, and eight. And then we have our new goals looking forward, moving forward.
And that's kind of that ceiling effect too, to go back to. Once you start seeing those high percentage of students, when you're looking into the eighty percent and higher, you're starting to kind of push that ceiling again.
And I think it's important to remember that these, you know, middle school kids, especially down in grade five and six, they're obviously still young and they're still developing. So, you know, we're expecting that, you know, you can see anywhere between, say, fourteen and twenty percent of kids to still be needs improvement or need some assistance. And that is expected in a typical middle school where kids developmentally aren't all in the same place or the same pace. So our goals acknowledge, I think, you know, a high standard while acknowledging that we're, it's okay to still be a developing reader and writer in fifth and sixth and seventh grade. It's okay. You're there, that's what we're here for. So I think it's a little bit disingenuous, we would say, well, we want all kids to be advanced and proficient a hundred percent by fourth grade and then some of them, that's just, that's why they're in school. That's why their brains are developing. They're developing readers and writers. So I think we need to keep that in mind too, as we're looking at some of these. Sometimes these become numbers and we have to remember that they represent children.
Who are growing, changing, forming.
And that we have to be ready for where they are, not they fit into where we think they should be.
And to keep with the middle school, we'll kind of switch gears here and turn it over to math.
Great. So we are extremely proud of the gains that we've had in mathematics. And the data that you have shows the nice picture over time. And this would actually reflect several things. It would reflect our textbook adoption from several years ago, all of the professional development that has gone along with it, and the hours of work that the teachers have put into fortifying their instruction to make it have a better impact on student learning. So we're very excited this year to see, and I'll talk about the fifth grade in particular. If you look at the summary trend statement, two years ago when I was here, we identified grade five as an area of concern. We had forty-nine percent of the students in the proficient and advanced categories. Last year, we had the addition of the extra math periods, courtesy of Ms. Abrams there, and a lot more attention around mathematics, a lot more common planning time, a lot more meeting time, a lot more in-house professional development led by the math specialist and myself. And we saw this fantastic gain. And I just wanted to report to you that we maintained that this year. And so we're very proud because we can talk a lot about cohort groups and was it just that group? And so I wanted to report back to you one more time to say, no, it was actually the trend that we see now that's occurring. So we're very excited about that. This year, the game changes slightly as we implement the Common Core state standards, but we see that as an opportunity and a positive change for kids to obtain mastery of concepts and spend more time on critical areas like number and fractions that we know are critical for their success in high school. So we anticipate that this trend will continue. Just as a means of reflection, we have continued to use the Galileo Computer-Based Assessment System. That makes us feel slightly relieved when we think about the PARC assessment, that maybe our students will be somewhat prepared for that as they've been using a computerized assessment system for a couple of years now. We also have in place a one-week concept review of things that we feel students should have mastered before they get to grade five. It is a transition year. So that has shrunk from like, it used to be years ago, a one-month review and then a two-week review. And it's sort of been really streamlined and condensed to be one-week targeted and really just activate the concepts for the kids so that they're ready to build on it in grade five. Teachers have found that extremely helpful because they can identify misconceptions right in the beginning of the year, correct them, and move on. Am I going to elementary now?
I'm going to talk about science before we move on.
We're going to talk about science, okay, sorry. All right, middle school, we're staying.
So much to talk about.
I know. All right, so science, again, MCAS is given in grades five and eight for science. And in the grade five assessment is a reflection of three, four, and five. You've heard me say that lots of times. And then the eighth grade assessment is a reflection of six, seven, eight. We have talked in the past, grade five is going to be the star of the show tonight. I hope the grade five teachers are watching this. We've talked in the past about some of the concerns we had about grade five. And last year, we implemented this Sengari Active Science Program for the first time. So we actually saw a big gain in science as well in grade five. We'll just get to my page here. That little, can you flip to that little chart in the summary trend statement?
You're in the summary trend statement.
There we go. And to the very back page of your packet. So if you look at where we were in 2009, we were at fifty percent proficient, advanced, and fifty percent warning needs improvement combined. And we sort of tipped the scales in the unfavorable way in 2011 where we had the warning needs improvement were up to fifty-one and the proficient and advanced were up to forty-nine. And when we were here last year, we talked about how we were hopeful that adding the Sengari Science Program over time would help us to improve. We did not anticipate, however, having such a big gain just in one year's time of thirteen percent of the students moving to proficient and advanced. So we're very encouraged by that. We believe in the program. We believe that students should be scientists. We believe that should be actively studying. But again, we didn't expect it to happen so fast. So I think that's just a reflection on what good instruction can do and when kids are engaged and involved, how that they remember things. We also added last year as a trial, something called Zingy Learning. We used it in both eighth grade and fifth grade. And it is an interactive animated program that we thought would be very useful because it's designed specifically to help kids recall the information from those previous years that they may not have seen for a while. So there are little lessons that sort of reenact the experiments of what they've done. And there are follow-up questions and quizzes that go with them. The students loved them. We tried it the year before with eighth grade with great success. The fifth grade program was new and we were able to try it for free, which was, well, if we can have it for free, that's fabulous. And we think that was part of our success as well. So again, time and attention, the right instruction, the right tools, and the people willing to execute them have made the difference in that performance. Our eighth grade too is always dynamic and they have so much going on with their robotics program and their authentic lab experiences that they have. Sorry, there's a double there on your packet. But we did see an eight percent increase in proficient and advanced. We continue to be above the state average. There is a continued focus on the inquiry-based experiments, performance assessments, lab experiences, technology, the Zingy Learning that I mentioned. One thing that's not actually reflected here that I was thinking about as you were speaking is there has also been an increased focus on writing. And they've incorporated Quick Write into their science instruction so that they can really reflect and synthesize everything they do in the lab. So that's happening in grade seven and eight. And there's a lot of vertical articulation going on between those grades as well.
And they did a lot of work to develop some of the literacy strategies that they would apply to science. And actually, one of the science teachers was so excited. She's using Science News, which is a magazine, a periodical that she uses with the students in her classroom, to implement some of those strategies. She said it's going fabulous. She's so excited about it.
They're very, they're very excited and they're very committed to the content literacy standards with the increased focus on vocabulary and writing, as I mentioned, yeah, so.
And even some of the reading strategies, how to help students read a science text or a science informational.
I think when the students came in and showed us some of their science projects and how engaged they were, you can see how you learn by doing. And I think it's so important and you maintain that. It almost seems like math is the bane of everybody's existence, no matter what school system you're in. And I just, it just boggles my mind, you know, that everybody, no matter what system you're in, they're struggling with math. And I am like, and yet you have kids who are so into math, it's incredible. So I guess you either love it or you hate it, but the bottom line is you still have to learn it. I know last year, I think, and I could be wrong because I know one of my grandchildren misplaced some sort of a folder. But we got to encourage them to do things during the summer so that they're, you know. summer so that they're, you know.
Oh, we just had that.
You know, are we gonna, because I think it's, I hate to say it, but I think it's a great idea. I know a lot of parents and grandparents look for the summer off to enjoy their kids and grandkids, but, you know, I saw, I saw something in it and I really would love to see us keep it going somehow if we can, especially for the ones who.
I'm glad to hear that feedback. There's actually been a lot of dialogue with the parents in the community recently. We held a parent information night where we had over a hundred people in attendance, which is really exciting for us to talk about sort of the outcomes of our summer math program as related to our Math Fact Fluency Plan. And I think what it has done is raised an awareness of some of the critical pieces that we think students need to have and what role parents can play in that in the summer because they want to be involved. So, giving them the tools to actually be involved in a way that makes a difference in the classroom is where we want to maximize our time. So, yes, we will continue that next year and we will be expanding, we have always had it through the middle school, but the middle school did not get a revision last summer as the elementary school did. So, they will get a revision this summer.
I just, I, you know, I saw it firsthand and I, at first I was like, what? And then, you know, as you watched them either struggle through it or do it or whatever, you could see that it does have some value and I think it's important for us to somehow maintain that and get everybody on board.
That's great.
That don't leave it till the last week.
That's a great goal for us, yes.
That you really should be doing this week by week, you know, take a few minutes, it's not like, you know, you've got a lot of hours in the day and I, I think some of them who wait till the last minute, it kind of defeats the purpose. If you're not doing, and I think we need to reinforce that, that here's a packet and they leave it on the table or someplace and then find it and say, oh my God, I gotta do it. I don't think that's the intent. I think the intent is a little bit every day, week, whatever, and I think we need to get that across.
Well, and part of, I think, my responsibility is making the resources more accessible to parents. They were there and posted, but not in the most user-friendly way. So, I'm in the process of developing a wiki that will be a portal for parents where there'll be lots of resources for ongoing support throughout the year in the classroom, different videos that are being made in the classroom in addition to all of the summer components and other things that parents, we just might find helpful, articles and things like that. So, that's under construction, but it's something that we're working to at least.
Are there websites that can?
Oh, tons, and that's there right now. That's on our website right now, under Summer Math, Math Challenge, which can be found on the Foxborough homepage, bottom left. And you can see the list of websites, the list of apps, lots of places to go, but it's not really where I want it to be yet. I think it can be better. We're great to greater.
But I just, I saw it firsthand last year and I think we just have to get in the right groove with this and really get everybody on board.
I like that idea a lot. It's great.
Transition to the elementary, we've talked about it in CAS a little bit, but some of the other data points, we've got some new data points because we've transitioned from a different assessment that's really looking at our literacy, from the DRA to the DRA II. So, I think that's some key points of what it's doing for us as an assessment. We'll just start there.
So, the DRA II is the latest version of the developmental reading assessment and it's a more comprehensive, rigorous assessment for our students. It has a timed component, so students read orally and their reading rate is timed and calculated. There's also a written component, which more mirrors now the expectations for students. So, that's the new tool that we're using. It also has a second component with it called the word analysis, which we can use to dig deeper into those students who aren't meeting our benchmarks, what pieces of their reading is it that's holding them back. So, we have transitioned to that and you'll see that those are our new baselines. This is based on this past fall, this past spring's data. And you'll notice that at grade two, there's a dip and that's where that written component comes in. Another piece of the assessment is we're also assessing fiction and nonfiction at different points throughout the, the elementary. At each grade level, there's this point where they have to be able to read and comprehend a fiction as well as a nonfiction piece before they can proceed to the next level. So, it's really giving us some more comprehensive information about our students and what they can do in terms of reading.
So, just to hang on for a second, so, when Diane said there was a dip, she doesn't mean from last year's three-year rolling average to the new, because it's an entirely new scoring system because we upgraded to a more comprehensive assessment. So, we really have to reset because there's no comparison between the scoring and the other one and this scoring because of so many different, so many more components in the DRA II that gives you more comprehensive view of literacy and different smaller date score points within the overall score. So, that, you know, you can't compare the DRA I to the two, it's just a complete reset. So, our new baseline can only be based on one year's worth of data, which was.
Can you just explain on the left side, the D, level three, level sixteen, twenty-eight, what is that?
Those are the levels that, so, at the end of kindergarten, we want our students' benchmarks to be reading level three text, which is the leveling system within the assessment.
But to me, it says DRA, level thirty-eight, what is that?
That would be end of, considered end of third grade.
Okay.
That's what those levels are. And with the, the new assessment, there are new benchmarks as well for, considered for the end of the year. So, kindergarten stays the same, but in grade one, we look for a range of sixteen to eighteen would be developmentally appropriate for students.
And those that, when it says with the goal, those are set by the assessment tool.
Okay.
So, those aren't something we arbitrarily pick, that's what they say the goal should be for students at that grade.
So, like in the past, I know when my kids were in elementary school, you know, the teacher would say, okay, you know, you're in first grade, but you're reading at a, let's say, third grade level or whatever, or maybe you're reading high. Now, will they be saying that, will they be referring maybe to?
Well, it's interesting because the old, the old way, like the old standardized tests we're kind of used to that we're given years ago when you get this, statistically, grade level equivalents are not reliable. So, sometimes you would have a child in sixth grade that's saying reading at twelfth grade level, that was not actually true. A good reader for that grade, yes. But any statistician will tell you never to pay attention to the grade level equivalents because those tend to be, but do pay attention to the, the stay nines, you know, that you saw, zero through nine, and definitely pay attention to the percentile scores. So, if you were at the eighty-eighth percentile, then you did better than eighty-eight percent of the kids across the country, for example, if they were nationally normed or whoever the norming group was. This is not a nationally normed type of standardized assessment. So, there weren't a whole lot of aspects of that. And we sometimes will, will still get that where somebody thinks that we can show, but and there's also a difference between instructional level and independent level. This is a kind of a higher assessment because the DRA actually assesses where they're reading independently and you tend to instruct a little beyond that. So, this is an independent reading level, which is a higher standard.
It's a good clarification though.
Yeah, but I remember that, you get those things, I would say your child's reading at like eleventh grade, you know, level, it's so, you're like, wow. But the fact that, you know, your child's doing better than eighty percent of other sixth graders, that's very helpful.
Exactly.
But statistically, those were known to be unreliable and I just think companies like.
Totally shows like this.
Then parents wanted to keep the test going and this whole racket, but that's why you don't see those sums anymore because the information, type of information we used to get from those types of standardized tests, I think the last one, Foxborough, it was called, gee, I should remember because, remember that, five years ago, we stopped it, whatever it was.
Santa?
No.
Terranova.
Terranova, yeah.
We should know that.
But you, the kind of data, you were spending a lot of money, the kind of data you get back, isn't particularly useful. So, you're in my sixth grade class and you, you were at this stay nine and whatever you read, but then what do I do with you in class? Well, you didn't tell me anything about where to instruct you next or what your next goal should be or what you needed most, even if you were a really good reader to get to the next level. So, it was kind of a report that didn't go anywhere. So, that's why we have all of these that give us actual information about what, where kids are and what they know and what we need to do next to get them to the next level. So, it's a, it's a total different, little software.
So, moving on to our writing assessments. So, we have established our new three-year rolling average for our writing assessments for grades one through four, and we've also established our new benchmark goal. We have, just recently revised the writing prompts that we use with our students to make, have them more accurately reflect what the students are being asked to do in the Common Core. We've also tweaked our rubrics a little bit too, to make sure that they, that we improve the clarity for the expectations that we're looking for in the students' writing. And we've also, to help create consistency, because these are district-created assessments across, so to create the consistency across the district, we've done some collaborative scoring with the writing samples so that, you know, a second grade sample score that the Barlow School versus the Taylor School, that the expectations the teachers have are the same.
Interesting, the other thing too, you may have wondered on this, the kindergarten piece, the three columns and what are those numbers, it's hard to squeeze that information in, but this is another example of improvements in assessments as far as improvements of information that we're able to gain. So, with this assessment that we're now using, we're able to look at uppercase letter identification, lowercase letter sound relationships, and so, the three numbers that you see there from the new baseline to a three-year benchmark is what that is portraying there. So, as Debbie was talking about a little bit earlier, we're going to continue to keep all of this data ourself and monitor over time. That won't necessarily be on the district report card that we're creating because it's talking about letter identification for kindergartners, but it's very important we see where our students are when they come to us and where we expect them to be when they're moving on to the next.
So, actually, that's really important if people are looking at that. We didn't go down from ninety-one to seventy-nine to fifty-five. It means how many, what percent of the kids can identify every single uppercase letter? The next one is every single lowercase letter, which is harder. And can you identify the sounds associated with that letter? Am I right?
Yes, you're right.
Yeah, so, naturally, you know, there are a lot of kids in kindergarten that can identify the names of the letters, but may not know all the sounds like W, they still want to say, you know, that's a Y, the W is a Y because it sounds the same. So, that's what those numbers are, what our benchmarks are for, the three separate components of letter sound ID, where it used to be one global score. It would be, you either say the name of the letter or you say the sound, you would get credit for anything that you could come up with, but it was kind of looped and they don't not lose it, it was um.
It's much more.
You had, you had choices in how you could demonstrate your knowledge of that letter. Now, it's compartmentalized into each separate.
And gives us much better data to work with. So, teachers can look and say, oh, they can identify letters, but they're not really strong with their sounds, so that's where I need to work on the next. So, and kindergarten teachers have, this is one of the components of the word analysis with the new assessment tool, the DRA II, and they really like it because they feel like it really gives them a true picture of what their students can, cannot do yet.
And then as in, as they were charged, we have other assessments in math at the elementary level, we've had to set some new baselines based on assessments and as you heard, the Common Core.
Right.
It's coming to play.
So, last year was the first year of implementation of the Common Core at the elementary level, which meant that we needed to retool the assessments that we had. So, you're not really looking at apples and apples here. In kindergarten, and just as Debbie was explaining with the letter, sound, thank you, relationship, in math, it used to be that students just had to demonstrate that they could count or that they could skip count by twos. Now, they must show that they know that the result of that act of counting results in a quantity and they have to be able to identify not just, oh, I skipped counted to fourteen, but that now, whatever you counted, there are fourteen of them. And if they cannot do both of those things, they are not considered to be meeting the standard. So, the rigor of the assessment in kindergarten has increased pretty significantly. They also have to, and we've spoken a little bit about this before, but it's great for the people at home, they have to show that they can decompose and recompose numbers, so take them apart and put them back together in different ways. So, knowing that I could make a five with a four and a one, or a two and a three, or whatever it may be, and reversing those with a community of property is all part of kindergarten. So, the rigor there is a big jump from where they were and yet, they still had a very impressive performance on the assessments. It should be noted that the kindergarten teachers really worked together, much as Diane was speaking about sort of calibrating how we assess the students and how we score the assessments. So, they came together and made rubrics that were very explicit so that no matter if they were sitting in their classroom by themselves or sitting with their colleagues in their building, it would be the same across the district. So, they actually served as the model for the rest of the grade levels as we pursued that work with them as well. So, you can see that we have set our new three-year goals and we are pretty pleased with the progress that we have seen, especially if you flip down to the bottom one, which is the June assessment. So, really, at the end of the year, we're all, no, you were there, there you go, where it all comes together for them, we can really see that, you know, where our goal is for ninety percent in three of the grades, which is very close to the ceiling there for the students to be there on the standards for their grade level. Questions?
I think that one of the things we definitely see is more rigor, much more comprehensive assessments in order to be in line with what we're expecting students with the new standards that are here, and that there's multiple data points that are being used to look at where we are and where we need to go.
Do you want to talk about MCAS for three and four? So, as I mentioned earlier, we were really pleased with our math performance. In every grade four through eight, we saw gains. The only grade that we did not see a gain was grade three, and there's actually a misprint in your handout. It says, we went, we increased by seven percent, that was actually a decrease. So, that will be our area of focus. Last year, we had a very similar area of focus in grade four. So, this year with the Common Core, we were sort of analyzing what could account for that seven percent? Could it be the cohort group? What could it be? We don't know. But one of the things that really stuck out at us, and it's basically what you were talking about before Martha, is that in the Common Core, one example of the changes that we have that affects third grade, is the students are expected to master their addition and subtraction basic facts by the end of grade two, zero to twenty. And what, and so, the curriculum and the framework is built on that presumption that the kids have that mastered so that the teachers can then go forward. And what we found last year was, and actually this year too, that's not the case. So, that creates a snowball effect that backs the teachers up and doesn't allow them to enter multiplication until later in the year than they would like to, or that they really should be. So, that's why there's such a push to get our math fact situation under control so that we can better execute the Common Core as it was written, because it is written in there as a, a non-negotiable expectation of the end of second grade. So, we think, we didn't do psychometrics on it or anything, but we think that that could be a big contributor to that decline, but we'll know next year, once we, we assess again. But that's one of the areas that we're putting a lot of energy into correcting. Grade four, we were really happy to see a nice gain there. Our data's definitely moving in the right direction. We know that is a challenging test for students. Grade four and grade five historically are where students are, you know, they're asked to synthesize, they're asked to do multi-step problems, they're asked to take their math and apply it. So, it presents a lot of challenges. And then there's language challenges and interpreting the question. So, we're pleased to see that they're continuing to grow and someday, we hope to be close to the ceiling. Sometimes I have ceiling envy when I look at people.
I have a question.
Yes.
Do the, do the kindergarten teachers feel as though the students per se that are starting kindergarten are actually in some way ready for kindergarten or are we kind of missing the boat or can we get into a position where, you know, not every household right now can afford preschool?
True.
And there's a lot of things that I think young parents or parents in general would love to have at their fingertips to help them prepare their child for school. And I, I've talked about this so many times and I, I just wondered if, if there is something that we can put together that would help these parents to prepare their kids for kindergarten? You know, before, if, if your kids came in and they counted to ten, we thought it was wonderful. Now, I think we expect them to count to a hundred and we expect them to do it backwards. So, I.
And not, and not start at one, we expect them to start at any number.
Yeah, so, I, I think it would be to our advantage, to our children's advantage, for anybody entering our program, if we could put together some sort of a packet that would help and offer it to the public, to children, say, who are three and four years old, what can you do to start helping these kids prepare for, for kindergarten?
Actually, you've been doing that for a couple of years now.
Yeah. But how do we get it out to people or how do we make them aware that it's there?
We get them early. We've been doing a parent night for a couple of years now where we invite, even area preschool providers can come, but we invite parents of anyone in the area, people who might be in other preschool, daycare centers, and everywhere to come. And it is about, I don't know, Diane, you've been putting it together the last couple of years.
Yes, it's, we call it helping your young learners succeed.
Yeah.
And so, the night is, we advertise it to the area preschools, daycare centers, we've, teachers have gone and posted it in the grocery store to try and get the word out. And the point of the evening is to share with parents what they can do at home to help their students, young students be successful. We have, for the four content areas, math, science, social studies, and literacy, and the parents go in, in each content, we try to show them developmentally, you know, what does it look like, say, in kindergarten or preschool, and then what does it look like in first grade? So, for math or for literacy, you know, what are the. So for math or for literacy, you know, what are the important things to be doing at home? You know, reading the nursery rhymes, you know, doing those sing-song games. So we do try to get that information out there.
Yeah, that actually was when we got the Full Day Kindergarten Grant. We started the year after that, because an important component of having that full day is to do outreach to the community. And so our kindergarten early childhood committee a few years ago started operating that to do that outreach to the community, and I would, I think it's been really.
How many people take advantage of it?
We've had great turnout, it's been really popular.
Yeah, it's been really, I'd say we have 40, 40 to 50 people attend each year.
And very, very well received.
I mean, take it one step further and look at the birth rates within town, kind of track them a little bit and see if they're still.
Well, you can only invite.
No, I know, but, but, you know, people don't, not everybody knows, and I just, I just want to see us reach as many people as possible.
Well, I think that's a piece of our process being reflective, so at the end of every evening, we ask for an evaluation, and then we sort of, the group, and it's a group of teachers, we have our preschool teachers, kindergarten teachers, first grade teachers, who all come out to run this night, and we sort of brainstorm, well, what can we do better next year to get more people in? So we are always thinking about that.
But we get, we literally get addresses, we get providers, we get home daycare people, whatever it is. And I would say, you know, that being a fairly recent offering, I mean, they've both already had a math and literacy night, what we call the elementary level ones that have been very well attended, so, good to see both, because they do so much, even the parent outreach programs. But the, the early learner one, which is getting parents in before they even enter our school, has had rave reviews, so to take it down to that level.
See if you can get the pediatricians to post it in their offices.
That's a good idea, that's a good idea, yeah.
That's probably your biggest resource, because they're in and out there all the time. So if you just, you know, went into the classroom and posted it, then I, I think you'd reach even more people.
The Y too, we do, the Y people come.
We actually have community, there's a Y person.
Community partnerships.
Seriously, I mean, that's where they go. So put it up there, put a bit closer up there.
Right, and we do have the community partnership, I can't remember the community group that she works for, but Karen Mitchell, she'll come, so she knows about our night, and she'll advertise it as well. She does workshops with the surrounding towns, but she'll advertise it to you and the people as well.
It's like, let's say, a custard agency. So we partner with them, we actually have those people in a Y preschool teacher on our early childhood kindergarten committee. So that really is, see, there's so many things that go on that people don't.
But in addition to that, there's one other piece that we have.
During kindergarten screening, our reading specialists have put together little goodie bags, so that when kids come in for their screening, they leave with a bag of goodies, which includes things that they can do with math and literacy, with numbers and counting, with the letters, and they go home with a book. But the reading specialists also take time to talk with the parents about simple things that they can do, you know, working with their name to help get kids ready for kindergarten. So it's another way we're trying to reach out to people. And even, hopefully, they have younger siblings as well.
The simplest advice, though, you know, we want to really dice it down, it's not really getting people to come to a night. Spend time with your children, take them and have them experience things, talk to them, vocabulary, read to them. It's really wide experiences that help kids be successful in school. So if you're staying home and not talking to them, everybody's on devices, they don't have a wide experience, they're not being read to, they don't have the vocabulary that you're providing them through, through regular conversation, that's really what does it. And, and I think that's what we see the last, I'd say at least 10 years, especially with the economy being challenging, that parents almost have that time, but that we are seeing kids coming in with less language, you know, knowledge of words and how they work and what words mean, but it really is wide experience. Take your kids places, show them things, go out in the backyard, talk about the things you see. That is really the key thing. It's really old-fashioned, old-school.
Mothering.
Interaction with, with language.
Well, and a little plug for math, they don't really see coins and money anymore either, because it's debit cards, so. Really just exposing them to coins and what they look like and what, no, really, I mean, it's true.
It's regular basis. Count the ants on the leaf.
That's right.
Fewer ants on this leaf, it doesn't, it's really experiential learning, that's what is really required.
Cooking together and measuring things and things like that.
Experiential learning is key to early development.
One other piece that I'd just like to add as part of the Full Day Kindergarten Grant, the requirements that go along with that grant, we're pursuing to become a Ready School certified for each of our elementaries, which means, are we ready for our students, our kindergarteners coming to us, and are they ready? So that is going to be, we talked about the NEAS for the high school, we're looking at the elementary schools and going through a year-long process at looking at, we're kind of a self-study, and it's based on eight different dimensions, and it will connect to the community. And so a lot of this, you'll be hearing more about it, but we're in the process right now of collecting data towards those eight dimensions of where we feel we do well, we'll be soliciting input from community, from preschools, from parents and teachers.
It's like an accreditation process for kindergarten, so.
So one other thing, another thing that we have going on right now.
Well, we'll be at the talk in our game.
Giving it a whirl.
This has been quite extensive and a lot of work, obviously, when.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dynamic duo.
Well done.
Yeah, dynamic duo.
Just one.
Yeah.
The school committee votes to reappoint Miss Debbie Stenali as a voting member of the Bi-County Collaborative Board Directors for the 2012-13 school year.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
You'll agree to that one?
Wow, gee, thank you. I'm forward to it.
I think that was quicker than the ones we've done for bad.
That was an over. Yeah, people are getting awful good at that.
All right, Turfs Up Field Project update, Stenali.
Do you want to do a little intro? You know, since this is an ongoing topic, we thought we'd put it back on the agenda for tonight. Some of the committees had opportunity to attend some of the either advisory committee or other things, but not as a whole committee. So we thought, since this is an ongoing project right now in concert with the Turfs Up Community Group, that we would keep it on the agenda so that the committee could discuss where we are now. And as part of that, working with the Turfs Up Committee, Bill and I put together this very short handout, which gives you a copy of the warrant article that's being sponsored by the school committee, and an estimate of all the different phases of the cost, and a site plan. So I guess just before we start the discussion, it's just important to remember that this is not part of the high school renovation project. This came about when the Turfs Up Community Group approached the school committee to talk about their project and where it was, and to see if they could agenda support. And I call it a, an initiative of mutual interest, because the Turfs Up Committee had the interest to have a turf field for Foxborough for community use, pursued the NFL grassroots rant of $200,000 to have the Turfs Up, the turf field installed somewhere in Foxborough, they've done a year's worth of work considering multiple locations. I call it a nice marriage, because as a committee and a school department, what our gap is really to have an onsite facility, complete onsite facility. It was mentioned in the NEAS report, but whether we had NEAS or whether we didn't, it's been a need that we've had to complete the high school campus, which is an important part of the school. So it's kind of like a mutual interest, maybe for slightly different priorities, where maybe, maybe the onsite is our first priority, the type of surface is secondary for them, the type of surface is important for the community use and all types of weather, and the location was up for grabs, just what's best for the community. So as you know, we've had updates here before, lots of different sites were considered, and it's, or based on all parties' input, the site that you see, that we've talked about before, where the baseball fields are currently located, seems to be the best site. I know there's been lots of talk at the community level informally about putting in on the turf field, say, at the Ahern, just putting it on top of the Ahern. I don't want to speak for you, but I know on behalf of the school department, maybe we, I would have felt less enthusiastic about partnering with Turfs Up, because our problem wasn't the type of surface at the Ahern, our problem was the location of the Ahern. So personally, I can say as superintendent, I would have been less inclined to pursue a supportive partnership with them. And then the original, well, not the original, but, because there were lots of original locations, but the other location considered behind the high school would be fine with us, because we would use it. But I think when it comes to it's a community project and it's supposed to be for community use, I think the community would perceive us to be kind of like field hogs, if it were just behind the high school where the community can't see it, where it's fairly isolated, where people in the community wouldn't be as likely to use it spontaneously. So that would have been fine with us, but it didn't really meet everything that the community needs. So I think the location that all parties agreed to kind of met the needs on both sides, that's my opinion. Stayed it up front, and that's kind of how it, it has evolved. But Joe, to correct, I think we've had some misperceptions in the community. It is not part of the high school renovation, that money cannot be used for this, that money is being returned to the town. This is a town, community, and school project that we're pursuing options for funding it with the town finance people, and you're sponsoring, who are not, because that has to be sponsored by somebody to be put before the town. Pretty much in a nutshell.
You know, the town's growing, we're one of the few around who don't have a turf field. It makes our kids in the long run less competitive, because they're not playing on the type of fields. They get to play on them once in a while, but they don't get to practice on them. If we get into a final someplace, then we have to rent space someplace for these kids to be able to get up to speed. I think we just went through this with probably with a field hockey team.
We did.
So I think we're at a point, we're at a junction, where it's time to make this high school whole. And we're not expecting the world, I'm not, but I think unless we start this project, we will lose the grant in April, we'll also lose the fact that someone is willing to do the engineering on it, we'll lose the fact that somebody's going to help with taking down trees and whatever, so you're looking at a $400,000 loss. And, you know, I'm, you know, when I think about how long I've lived in this town and how we drag our feet and we go back and forth, and then we finally decide to do something five, 10 years later, and now the, the cost has doubled. I think it's time for us to have a stand and try to go ahead and start this project. And I think once we start it, I think more people will jump on board, and hopefully, as the economy changes, more people will be more receptive to helping with this project. And I think, you know, the younger parents probably see the need of it, because their kids are involved in sports and whatever, and you want them to be competitive when they get to the high school. So I think there's a lot of support. I've probably seen more support for this, and in talking with people, you know, out and about, they're absolutely engaged with this idea, and they think it's a great idea. So I think the enthusiasm is there, I think we should, you know, kind of jump on it at this point. And I, I think when we talked about, when we brainstormed that night about out back, out front, I think it is too isolated to have that much of an investment where nobody can keep an eye on it. I want, you know, the police or whoever to be able to come in and see something like that and go back out again. And I, I think it's a huge investment to put out back where, you know, if I was going to come up and use a track, I wouldn't walk back by myself. So, you know, the Ahern school, it's kind of open, it's right there, people are more apt to use it, but I think we also need to understand that as we do this, and as we buy into this project, you know, we have a track down there that we couldn't have MIA-sponsored events, because it's a six lane. So we have to think to the future, and putting in an eight lane type of facility when we, you know, get to the next phase and we can put in the track and whatever. So I, I think, you know, a step ladder approach to this, you know, field is a good idea.
Yeah, Martha, I was just gonna, you brought up that point, which is, I think people do have to be mindful, and I think it's clearly written here, that it is a two-phase project. So some of the.
It might even be a three-phase, you know, depending on what's going on.
Right, so some of the functionality of this field will not be able to be realized until phase two is complete. And I don't know whether you can, I mean, you know, the timeframe for phase two obviously has not been captured yet, it's, you know, obviously more funding that's going to be needed for phase two. And I think that we need to make sure too, that people understand that, that there is this phase two piece of it, and that it will impact how this whole project will be realized. So it is a, you know, a phase in, and that's necessary because of the funding and the cost. And there's a, you know, it's clearly outlined, I really like this, thank you, Bill, and Debbie for getting this.
This was, I have to say, this is Jim DeMons.
Oh, Jim, okay. Very helpful, I think it's really specific, it's very detailed, at least out the plan.
I just want to interject here, that Jim made very clear at the advisory committee meeting, that this was based on, you know, recent data from other turf fields that he's worked on within the last year, so is that right Karen? And so this is a pretty close, very accurate estimate, good numbers that he's provided to us and to the advisory committee.
Do you think, given that and given the phase two time component, that those numbers could be moving targets in the phase two, moving forward?
The more you hold off on phase two, the more it's going to cost you. I mean, we know that from every part of the.
I mean, I guess, I guess I'm stating the obvious, it's more of a rhetorical question, because, you know, yes, that's a grade, but also, given the timeframe, those numbers obviously could.
Although, I mean, hopefully, the economy will recover, but some of the costs for building came in under, so I guess we've been surprised the other way sometimes too, but these are current, current numbers.
Okay, great. Is your, was this on the agenda tonight, more as an update and a question?
And because, you know, we've been, well, we've been talking with various, you know, parent groups, our PTOs wanted to know what this was, so Karen Slavie's here from the Turfs Up Committee. So either Karen and I, or Karen, or Karen and Bill have been to all of them. And we had some questions that, I put it on, because there are some, without a lot of knowledge about how this works, there are some misperceptions out there that we learned from talking to people, that I think it's important to correct. And I guess the biggest one is, everyone thinks that you have a million dollars left from the high school, either buried in a coffee can, or, you know, in a secret account, that you're trying to figure out how to spend. That is not true. That money is town money. This was actually, I was surprised how carefully I had explained this to even parents in the know, honestly, because it isn't, how things work in town is not really that apparent to people unless you take the leap and put yourself forward to be on a board as a volunteer, or you're involved somehow in town government. So it, it was confusing to a lot of people, and after the fact, rightly so, I see. But I think the perception is, because the name school or school committee was attached with the Turfs Up Group, that they perceived that you had this money and you were compelled to spend it, and you were going to think whatever the next thing is. That is not the money, that money is borrowed by the town, it's going back to the town. Actually legally, you cannot vote to use your leftover money for this. So that, that's done. This is a separate partnership that we work with the town finance people to see where they think they can get the money. We rely solely on them to identify funding sources, solely on Randy Collins at the, at the town hall, who does a great job with his numbers and explaining to us what's available. And it's not that they're explaining what's available to us, it's what's available to the town. And that's why this is going to town meeting. So he is the one that identifies funding that could be available to fund any project at all, whether it's turf field, any other, and we are just the listeners, whether it's the Turfs Up Group, whether it's us, and it goes before town meeting, because it's identifying town funds that can be used. So this is not school committee money, you don't have a separate bank account, and it's, it's nothing to do with high school renovation. The other thing is, because we, I'm just going to explain what the question was, it might have been, so we had actually very, you know, people saying, well, if you have that money left, why aren't you saving it for the burl, roof, or heating, or, or for academic upgrades, more course expansion at the high school? That was one of the questions. So that's what really told me about how people understand, how, you know, to the extent people understand the money. So this is not school committee money, that we could not make a turf field and have five more courses and hire new teachers at the high school to teach them. This is totally separate issues, but everyone thinks it's the same.
Well, I think it's the same, but I, I think, you know, one of the things that I learned, because it's bonded money, it goes back and it goes to future projects that have a 20-year shelf life. You know, one of the things that, that when Randy came to us and we brainstormed about it, and we talked about moving the field out front and the renovation type of thing, there was a hint or an indication that maybe you could use it because it was renovation, but because it doesn't have a 20-year life to it, then we found out that it could be used then. Now, was this money promised to the town for the town hall? No, it was not. I think what people need to understand is, any bonded money goes back to the town, and the town, at town meeting will vote where that money will be reallocated. Could we, on a good day, turn around and go to town meeting and say, look, we had a million three left over, we want to reallocate it to the burl school? Yeah, we could do that, we could do that. Or the town could say, well, we want it for the, you know, town hall, whatever, but the bottom line is, the vote is taken at town meeting, as to where that money will get reallocated to. You know, I've heard a few rumors, and I'm a little bit irritated that, you know, we're trying to steal the money. I'm sad on this committee. No, Deb, let me, I might say. And I'm very, very offended by that, that this committee would ever do something like that, or we felt we were entitled to this money, and, you know, if we come and we ask for something else, somebody's going to give us a hard time, be it the advisory committee. That nonsense. I always say the best way to stop rumors, don't spread it. So I'm just telling you the things that I'm hearing, that I'm very, very upset about it. And that, you know, I don't, I can remember the first year I cheered this committee, and we had a huge surplus. I don't know if you were on the committee at that, were you? Okay. And Larry and I were part of the budget committee. And we turned around and we gave back almost a half a million dollars to the town. I remember Randy and Andy sitting out there and coming up to me afterwards, and they said, "Are you really serious about giving us that money back?" I said, "Yeah." And we did, because we didn't feel as though, and I can remember Paul Mortenson standing at the back of this room, telling me and Larry and this committee that the Town Meeting had voted for us to use that money for school, and we were therefore charged to do that. And my comment at that point was, "Well, you know, Paul, what if every freezer in the school system goes tonight and we spend this money? We have to come back to you because it's an unexpected expense. Where are you going to get the money? If we give it back to you, it goes back to the general fund. It helps to offset the CIP. It helps to not take away from our working budgets on the town and the school side." So, you know, we turned around and we gave back a half a million dollar surplus that we had, you know, and Chris Modus was here. So don't tell me that we haven't bought into the town side and we're not cheering and we're not doing our part and we're not conserving. So to hear rumors like that, that, you know, we think we're entitled to this money, or we can do what we want, or, you know, if you come back to us, you know, don't expect anything, well, I guess my comment is, I'll take it to the town floor every time. And what the citizens want in this town is what we're going to do. And that's the bottom line, and that's our charge. But I'm just offended at some of the things that I'm hearing, because I haven't wasted 15 years of my life sitting on this committee to have somebody accuse me of stealing money or doing something that's not in the best interest of the school system. And it better stop, because I'm not going to put up with it at this point.
Yeah, I haven't heard any feedback about stealing money. What I have heard is some confusion about how can we afford Town Hall and a turf field and that sort of thing. So I think one of the things that will help us as a committee, and certainly I think we're all still supportive of this Warren article, is, I think one of the things that will help us is if we get some clarity, you know, between now and December 11th, I think it is, from Randy and Bill, this might be where you can help us on how we might project as a town these upcoming expenditures. I think to me, having $400,000 available right now that we lose if we don't do this, makes a lot of sense to go forward with this. But I think it has to be in the context of the larger picture, and I think that's where I've heard some confusion. So I think we need some clarity around that. And, you know, just the other thing I'll point out, just as point of information, it looks from this as though if we were to put the new turf field in the back, we would save a fair amount of money, which is the cost of relocating and constructing new baseball fields. So in all transparency, I think that's an option that needs to be looked at. I certainly support it out front for the reasons Martha, you and others have articulated. But if push came to shove, we could put it in the back and save some money. I think, to me, the biggest problem with that is access and parking. There's so much more out here. But, you know, it's an option, so.
I think if you truly, if you put it out back, you wouldn't be putting it out back as a stadium setup. When we did see the, when Jim develops, did do a plan showing that, it gets extremely tight when you try to put in the eight lane track and the stadium stands. But the other side of that is, we do not have the traffic flow to really support that in the back of the building. So I think that's, you know, if it's just a matter of having a turf field on the premises, which I don't believe it is, but if it's strictly that matter, then, then yes, going out back is a viable.
Well, I think, again, I'm supportive of putting it out front. Devil's advocate. I think there is benefit to having just a turf field. Not all the benefits educationally of having it out front and being part of the culture, but we still would be able to have sports in the rain. We still would save on our grass fields that we have to close and get destroyed and have to cost maintenance. We still could make it a community access field. To me, the parking and access, though, is, it's a sizable problem. But, so I just put on the table that I think that is a cost savings option. But again, I come back to my main point, which is, I think we need more direction from the town, whether it's Randy or the advisory committee and their analysis, or Bill with your help. You know, so, okay, the town agrees to fund this, but what positions up with the town in light of the other things that are coming? I think that's where we need some.
Well, and I think Deb and I have talked about this, and I think at least my perspective from a financial side is, our number one priority is our operational budget. Our number two is our CIP budget, which we do annually, which is our buses and our technology. Number three, you know, in my mind, is the Burl School, which is, you know, as you know, we've already started a process towards, and that takes a little while because we have the MSBA side of it. This is a great thing to have, but if someone were telling me that that's going to jeopardize us having the primary thing, which is our educational process, then we do have an issue, to your point. And I think that's, you know, that's the thing. Right now, you have 400,000. It's a, you know, a much bigger nut to swallow over time that we have to put out here. It does give you a great concept when you're done, and I think overall, the community will be pleased with what they have at the end. But to your point, they have to be able to feel that they can afford it and still afford everything else we're having to do.
So just last comment, and I'll, you know, if we don't or are unable to articulate to the public at Town Meeting how this fits in the context with the rest of these expenditures, I don't believe it'll pass. So I think we'd better be prepared to have those.
Bruce, I couldn't agree with you more. I think it's very true, because I've been hearing the same kind of feedback. There's so many demands and challenges that the town is facing right now, and we do need to put it into the context of all of those other things. And I think if we can do that, then people will have all the information they need, and it's a process. So I agree with you, and I think that if we can get that kind of clarity, it will be advantageous, so.
Sure would be beautiful.
Absolutely.
You know, but if you don't make the offering, if you don't let people have their say one way or the other, then we're not doing our job either.
Absolutely.
You know, and I think Randy, I had to leave before, Randy did his presentation the other night, and he was the one that, I think, presented some sort of funding proposition for this. He spoke to it. So, you know, it's something more that obviously we need to, we just need to move it forward and let the people decide.
Oh, yeah.
Bottom line.
I agree with what Bill said about our priorities. I'm sure we all agree with that.
Yes, definitely.
We hope our first small, small group meeting is Friday afternoon, where we get a look at that, because we've been trying to get that ourselves.
Great.
And we haven't been able to have that yet. So we will have more of an understanding of how that will be presented as well. So I agree. It's something, I think it's great that you sponsored. We'll see how they put it all together. I just hope people kind of look, have more accurate information than not. And I think, you know, Martha's point, money has been returned before. Money was just returned this past year. And if we don't need it or we're not going to use it, we're totally upfront and transparent to return the money. And the other thing, too, I don't think the general public notices that, so for example, you know, we're starting to see some revenue increases, which hopefully means the economy's coming back and things are getting better, and while we're cautious about it. You know, this past spring before Town Meeting, there were more revenues identified, close to half a million dollars in the town. We could have said, "Well, then, let's put the next thing on our wish list forward." But we have a very collaborative relationship, whether it's years ago, whether it was just last spring, that we had a meeting and they were very transparent about what's available, but said, "Please, let's not ask for it. We're going to need that for future things for the town." We try to have those priorities in our balance as well and understand the balance. And we, it wasn't really a long discussion. We said, "Absolutely, fine, we get that. Let's leave it." So whether they're going, you know, the town wanted to take that money and preserve it for other things going forward, whether, whatever it was they had in mind, whether it was a Town Hall or other uses. And we very collaborative, we said, "That's fine. We're happy with what we have, and we won't ask for it." And we didn't. So I think that there's recent history of being collaborative with the town, understanding that whatever revenues are available, it's not that people think it's that simple split and we're just going to take all we can get and do as much as we can. It doesn't work that way. So just this past spring, we gave up whatever percentage that anybody wants to think of that we could have said, "Oh, there's almost, whatever it was, four or $500,000 additional revenue still available. We'd like to, you know, access our portion of that." We don't do that. We didn't do it, and it wasn't even a discussion. I don't even think I brought it back to, you know, because we knew where we were and what we were.
And where we needed it at that point.
So that does happen all the time. So it's not that the school committee and the school department side is looking to spend out money so nobody else gets it. It's not like that at all, is the opposite of that. We actually don't access all the dollars that we could if we understand the town has other needs in mind, that they want to preserve the money for. And that money was available for the FY13 budget, and it wasn't tagged for anyone. Any school, any department, schools or others.
I think maybe we, you know, we need to talk, you know, more about those kinds of situations to.
People need to realize.
People do. They need to realize kind of sometimes the process that goes on behind the scenes when decisions like that are made. And I think it's important. It may change their perspective of how they view how decisions are made.
I think we need to keep in perspective how valuable the sport programs are to students. You know, and people say, "Well, you know, you don't need them, cut them, whatever." But you know what? There's a lot of kids who try harder, who strive to get a grade in order to be able to stay on a sport program. To me, that's huge, because there's an incentive there. You know, and you dangle something out in front of somebody and they're going to work harder for it. And I think people need to realize that there's a whole experience that goes on here, and the extracurricular, the band, the social clubs we have, the math classes, the debate teams, all of that comes into play. But sports is such a huge part of a high school.
It's a different kind of learning.
It's a different kind of learning.
But it is learning.
It is learning, but I think the motivation to succeed academically is a huge motivator. So I think we need to keep that in perspective, too.
Are you planning to bring this up again in two weeks?
Yeah, I was just, that was my next question. Would you like it just repeated again?
If you have an update.
Yeah, if you have an update. Let you know what we are.
Well, maybe if somebody could come and explain the funding.
Yeah, I mean, and actually Randy has given us the funding concept, but I think probably spending more time just on it as a single source would be a good idea.
You know, have him come and explain it so that we can.
I think to Deb's point, though, as an example, coming out of this last spring, we did give back 109,000. It would have been more, but when we decided that we had some things to do in the community, we went back in front of the CIP committee and asked for the money to basically redo the parking at the IGO. If they had said no, we would have given that back, but they realized we would be just coming back to them at a later date for additional money. So they gave us the blessing to spend that money. So we've been doing things under the process that the town has set up. We don't just spend the money. We, you know, we spend the money, obviously, on our, on the kids and the needs that we have within the district that way. But when it comes outside of that, and when we've had a good year, like we did last year because of utility costs and stuff like that, we try to accomplish some of the things to keep the buildings and facilities up that we would otherwise have to go back to the community on anyway. So I think that's, you know, and again, but it's all through a process. We had to get votes to approve to do that, and just didn't do it on your side of the table, so.
The other thing people, that seems to be misunderstood is all these building projects in town and what happens with the money that's left over. Every single building project, when it's nearing completion, let's go back to near Hearn, when that was nearing completion, if other needs are identified that weren't maybe in the original proposal, you overlooked, or a need came up, or a result of something you did, and now you need to do this because they have a domino effect, every single time those needs were met by the governing board and by the building committee to finish the project. Never went back to the town or any other group for permission because you have to finish the project and finish it all.
Well, that's something that we did here.
And then what money is left goes forward, so whatever's left from Hearn went on to the health safety building project. And then the same thing happened there. There were decisions made toward the end of it with things that weren't the original proposal, as long as it's within the guidelines of the borrowing and the project funding that they did. And nobody, I mean, if people want the specifics, you can get the specifics, but certain things were done to finish that project that might not have been. Never went back to the town or any other board for permission to do that, because that always happens in a project. You build something that complicated, you're never going to remember every last screw or light bulb or whatever that has to be done. And then whatever money's left from that rolled forward into our project, which that was a lesser amount, but rolled forward to this project. You, what you did with the auditorium and the paving, followed the exact same process that's always been followed in town, finished things up. We had walkthroughs for the public for selectment or advisement. Anybody who wanted to come to show that these needs could have been included in the beginning, probably should have been included in the beginning, especially if it was safety issue or whatever.
Well, they weren't because of the cost analysis.
Right. But now you can. If you have an advantageous situation, you can do it. That process was no different from what it's been prior to that. And then whatever money we have left returns to the town and rolls forward to the next project, whatever that may be. And so nothing has changed. The process is the same. The meeting of the needs at the end of the building project by that governing group and the, and by the building committee, the towns, the towns permanent building committee, is exactly the same and has always happened that way. And I just don't know if, why, at this point in time, people feel like that had to require a vote because there's a pressure for the Town Hall or a funding source, or what, I don't know what the different factors are that swirling around now, but it, there's no difference in this project than it had, than finishing up the last three projects that have been.
Well, we couldn't have done this at a more opportunistic rate. And unfortunately, the numbers that we were given for the big ticket articles that we needed to do on this project were huge. There was no room for anything else. But, you know, I was talking to my son the other night, and I said something, he said, "Well, what did you do extra?" And I said, "Well, we redid the, the boys' locker rooms and stuff." He says, "My, now, my son's in his late 30s." He said, "Are you kidding me? They were dumped when I was there." "Well, that was over 20 years ago." And I kind of chuckled, because I said, "You know, you're right." And he said, "They were disgusting then." He said, "You redid them?" I said, "Yeah." Like, "They're brand new." And he was like shocked that we would think to go do that, because, because it's way down the end, and nobody sees it, and it was okay to leave it the way it was. Well, when we walked through there and we looked at it, we said, "No way, no way. We're going to finish this." So we were very fortunate in that we were able, and, you know, ironically enough, these were all things that were going to have to be done. So we would have been going back to CIP every year. We would have been nickel, diamond, these other things that we need to do in order to try and bring this building up. We had an opportunity to go back and get all the things that we needed to do, and I think we did a stellar job.
We most definitely would have had to go back to CIP.
Oh, my goodness, yes.
For a lot of the things. Even the auditorium lighting, because.
When people come to Town Meeting, they're going to be shocked, they're going to be able to see.
They can't see in there.
They'll be like, "Whoa, what happened?"
So are you going to talk to Randy?
We will and see if we can invite him to the next meeting.
Can I talk about that?
I think the more we talk about it, the more people understand.
Before we conclude this topic, I just, since Karen's here, I wanted to say, we've seen some kids up at the Common. There's been student support with signs, so there is definitely a quota within the student community who this is all for, anyway. And also, Turf Sub is continuing their fundraising. You had a fundraiser last Friday night at the football game?
Two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago, I'm sorry.
October 26th, Tapleino came up and sold sausage and pepper hoagies and gave us up the entire proceeds, which was $540.
Awesome. That helps.
Several people put in five or 10 bucks, and so, you know, we're over $600 for that one little awareness, you know, fundraiser. We had a lot of youth sports, handing out our pamphlets, "Vote Yes," and handing out stickers, "I Caught the Wave," and they were all excited going through the stands, so.
That's awesome.
The kids are really excited, and after that, it was the football players that came up for the day in one-half-hour shifts, based on freshmen through seniors, and they had a blast, they were so spirited, they were classic young boys, excited about the prospect of a turf field coming to the town.
I want to credit, I stopped up, and they were, they were there, they were so spirited and enthusiastic, and I have to give you and your husband credit for being there all day with them.
It's our pleasure.
It was really, it was great. I mean, you don't often see something that's hidden behind, with them.
Diana, you're still here. How do you feel about the prospect of us being able to make this a whole high school once and for all?
It would be fabulous. I've been in schools where, in both, where you do have a field that's off the campus as well as your main field that's on the campus, and there's just something, I think, to be said for the whole life of having a whole campus as well. But I also look at the field, too, as, as we were talking actually this morning, or was mentioned at the principal's coffee, that it's just not football, but it's lacrosse, and it's field hockey, and it's any other group that could come out, as well as soccer, the band being able to be here. You know, we always joke at the beginning of the year that, "No, you park between the white lines, not the yellow," you know, because the other color is where the marching band goes. And so it's just that whole community piece, and the fact that it's, it would be a showcase, really, truly, for here, for people to come right from the street, just walk across a field and you're on the field. So I just, I think all of that's such a plus, and the kids are very excited about the prospect of it.
You know, my older boy is playing youth soccer. Five away games in a fall season, two of them are on turf fields. These are 12-year-olds. These are not high school football teams, these are 12-year-olds playing on turf in other towns.
Gives you pause for thought, doesn't it, Bruce?
One of the few, we're one of the few, really, truly, not only in the Hox, but in the state, where your field is off-site versus on-site, and everybody's going to turf just for that whole 20-year piece of it and the usage of it, really, 365 days a year potentially.
And we're not trying to have something more or better than everybody else, we're just trying to, in this pie, catch up. But, you know, there's a question about timing, what certainly is superintendent, what I prefer timing-wise, that we passed our budget, you know, we're in negotiations with teachers, studying to, would I prefer that we passed our budget and the CIP and had a plan for the borough, and then this came up? Of course, but that's just not the way it is. It's just, it's not the way it is right now. They have an opportunity, the opportunity expires at the beginning of May, and we're either going to see how the town feels about the opportunity or not. So what do you think?
Uh, Arthur?
Yes, sure. So we've talked a little bit at our meetings about the school lunch program. I just wanted to say, we got an invitation from the Ahern parents to go to a Thanksgiving luncheon next week at the Ahern, and I'm looking forward to sampling, the menu sounds fantastic.
What day is this?
This is next Thursday, November 15th, at One Hall in Ahern, Diner. So that came home on Friday, so.
And I think it's six for adults, and it's a usual lunch price.
The cost for students is the regular class, that's their lunch that they're going to get. And adults, it's $4.75.
Oh, $4.75.
Which sounds like a good deal for the menu.
So I will make sure that the committee gets an invitation as well, but it's, I think it's a great idea. I know Bill came, whose concept was this originally?
It was Allison.
Allison, food service director. But I thought, you know, is this something we think we can do, should do? So this is a great idea, we're trying to think outside the box, let's have parents come in and sample the new spread cooking and the cuisine.
I think it's going to be very well received.
And have lunch with your child. I don't know how the children will feel about that, but.
I think that's the best part of it.
I think it's happening.
I think it might be. 1:15 is after lunch.
Oh, it's after.
1:00 to 1:45. So might I be with the kids?
1 to 1:45?
I'm not sure, that was a place for your students to leave, I'm not sure if they're going to mask up.
I do think you will. My understanding, and Bill's nodding too, is that if you sign up, you will have lunch with your child.
Oh, Sam would be very excited.
I'm not sure if our middle school students will be like really thrilled about that, but it's just a nice thing, and you get to see kind of the difference in the, in the food service, and have a little tasting, and a great meal. I will be there myself.
I think it's the opportunity for parents to see what the real food is. A lot of times we'll hear from our kids what they think the food is.
Their interpretation.
Exactly. And I think this, again, I think Edith, who's the chef-cook that's at the Ahern, along with Allison, thought this was at least a first try at doing something like this, and so that's why we're going to try it at the Ahern.
So that, if people are asking, "Why aren't we having it all five schools?", number one, we couldn't do it at all five schools all at once, we're trying it. I really don't think the high school students want to see you at lunchtime, and it's tough to do with three elementary, so we're going to try it where we have the biggest population.
The other thing I wanted to mention is that next Friday night, the 60th, is the annual BIT auction for the three elementary schools at Raphael's at 7 o'clock, and that's the major fundraiser for our three elementary schools, so I'm looking forward to it. I hope everybody woke up.
I'm glad, no, I'm just glad that Diana had mentioned this Thursday night's Fall Festival. This is our MASC and Joint Superintendent Conference Week, and all of our, so I won't be able to attend the Fall.
I will be down on the Cape. I, that brings me to my other, the, you know, mask does not go forward with resolutions without them having been well thought out, and they give statistics of what it, what's going on now, their resolution and the rationale. So I just need, by consensus, would you want me to vote in support of those as they recommended them?
I don't know, it's a shame.
We all, we should have, everybody.
Can we contact the individuals again?
Sure. But you have to contact me sometime tomorrow, because I'm going on Wednesday.
I, I, I've only seen the resolution that just came in the mail yesterday, they forgot to include it. I don't really think we've seen that, those. I haven't generally.[1627.83]